We're gonna start our meeting tonight with the Nottingham Board of Select for Monday, December 16, 2024. As normal, we're gonna start our meeting with the Pledges of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right now, we're gonna go through our manifest in our minutes, and then we'll probably hit our reports from boards, but then we will go right to our appointments. And then after that, we'll go to our town administrative reports and go through the rest of the business tonight until we hit 7:30, where we have our public hearing on accepting the HOP grant funds. So, anybody have any things on the minutes from 12:09 to 12:10?
Just one thing, the spelling of my last name on line 196.
That's the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Page what?
On line 196. 12:02.
Oh, sorry, that was payroll. I said that wrong. My bad. Minutes were 12:02. I said that for that.
Okay. We can deal with the corrections?
I'm sure it's not the biggest issue for coming up, so.
So make a motion to approve the manifest count payable of 12:09 and payroll of 12:10.
Second?
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, public minutes of 12:02, 2024, as amended.
Second?
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Prove five, none. Non-public?
Not available.
Don't have them? Good. Perfect. Reports. I'll start off with planning board. We had a meeting last Wednesday. It was a workshop meeting. We didn't get through everything on there. The meeting was lengthy. We went till, you know, 9:30, almost 10:00. One of the things again was came up, we changed, we're recommending some changes to the zoning. It's mostly wording on that somehow the wording is there and making sure that things labeled one way in there is labeled the same way as in other categories, you know, things that we noticed over the years as you go through. But then one of the subjects that we didn't get into, which I was hoping to, was auxiliary AD use. But we talked about steep slope ordinances, and the steep slope that we were talking about was more for major impact developments, so not for like the one single house on a lot, but for, and what that steep slope ordinance that we're talking about, which we're trying to get to go through, is the fact of, let's say you have 20 acres or 30 acres of land. Here you go, perfect example. What's happening over on 156?
It's quite a slope.
And they destroyed quite a bit of the hill in order to meet the slope in the grade. Well, one of the ordinances that we're trying to get in there is for that to change, that you can't go and basically rip down a whole mountain in order to put your road through. That's major part of the steep slope.
So how's that gonna affect people? Are you still gonna let them put the road in?
Well, they might not be able to on that certain grade or might have to do something different, you know, and again.
Not gonna allow them to go up a Billy Goat Mountain?
Well, you can't, you can't have an incline of over 25%.
Right.
You know, I mean, for one, it's not gonna be good for our safety vehicles. It's not good for plowing. It's not good, I mean, there's plenty of negativities you can find on it.
Right.
Even though that, you know, housing is in need, but, you know, what comes first? The environment or the need? So, as if you watch any of our meetings, those discussions you think might be simple and quick? Nope, not really.
You're making a logo on a stand?
Yeah, well, something like that, Steve, right.
There's a cliche they have somewhere.
So, and then we went over budgets, and I brought out what we brought, I brought to the chair, the budget that we had in front, just to go over certain things. And I think as a board, they understand the 6,000 for the Stratford Regional, how it's more important to have the planner than to have, be part of that group at this present time for the budget, so. And then there was just some other things about the computers and stuff that, for Alana, and how we're splitting that up, so. But all that stuff is available at the YouTube video if you want to watch. Sometimes it's exciting, sometimes it's not, but that's what happened to planning. Anybody else on the board?
Budget committee, we met last Thursday, went through the town budget and covered the, reviewed the warrant articles. Wasn't a whole lot of feedback, other than one committee member mentioned adding the newsletter back in. But the updated cost is close to $2,000 or $3,000 in issue.
Yes. Yeah, so I think for the six issues that they were hoping to publish in 2025, it's gonna be just shy of $13,000. Obviously, they're looking to continue the advertising efforts, which can offset some of that, but whatever the town would be willing to put forward to help with their efforts, they do have a printer available.
Well, people do like it, so.
So that was one piece that we talked about, and then we reviewed the warrant articles and covered kind of the details we were hoping to cover with those.
General consensus? Did they cut anything?
They did not. There was one or two members that are still concerned about keeping the rec line, keeping the assistant salary in the operating budget. They're gonna have it in the rec revolving for future conversation. I'm not sure if the majority of the board agrees with that con, that thought, but.
So you're saying, do they feel like it should be part of the?
There's one or two members that feel it should be, it should not be part of the operating budget, that that should be in the rec revolving instead of?
Just wanted to be sure it was clear.
And then the other thing that was brought up that I'm sure we'll review tonight is, looking at the budget, is that there's the position that we had hired for, for this year for the Alan Tran is covering, is that's not in the budget currently, is what our plans are for that. Oh, covers it, right?
It was a very quick meeting. It was less than an hour.
Come on.
We're on the wrong board.
It was a far cry from last year.
Bam, 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 bam.
Wow, wow.
And then we have to have the final budget to them.
On January 2nd.
Yeah, so.
So that's.
Pretty much our last run-through.
Okay.
Unless you meet again.
Unless we meet again.
And if we, we'll figure that out.
CIP met last Monday. We did discuss some of the library stuff some more. We're getting close to finalizing the CIP. We have a neck.
Finalizing the what?
The CIP.
No, finalizing the what?
CIP.
Capital Improvement Planning.
Oh.
The whole thing.
Yes.
As we got it.
We do have a meeting this Thursday before Budget Committee.
All right. Anybody else have anything? No. All right. Well, we are efficient and ahead of duty.
Cracking along.
Do you guys mind if we start with our five-minute early for our appointment? I see they're here.
Sure.
Is it Serge?
That's correct.
Mr. Serge, do you mind coming up?
Good evening. How are you?
Very good.
My name is Lee Foden.
Okay, I don't, sorry, your name's not on here, so?
I know. I'm Matt's associate.
She beat me to it.
Sorry.
That's all right.
We brought some extra cards for everybody, so you have them.
Nice.
Get your names correctly spelled.
Okay.
I'm waving over a cane with that.
Things are gonna say much better on our Michael Kels.
What's that?
It's this one.
At the night.
Another thing I brought too, this is an older marketing brochure we have. It just gives you a remote flavor of what we do, who we are. Had one personnel change in there, but.
Almost all the folks there are still with the firm.
Oh, didn't notice my picture. I get my good side.
Thought you had to turn around for that.
That's what my son tells me. So thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you for coming out.
Do you wanna give us a brief summary before we start asking questions about your firm and what you can do for, possibly do for our town as services?
Sure. Well, a little background on me. I've been practicing, let's say I graduated in 99 from law school, and I've been practicing municipal law since 2003. Actually started up in Hatfield, who I believe is your current, still your current firm? Yep. I was partners at Bart Mair for many, many years, and then I left in 2015 and came to Drummond, where we basically built what we have now as an 80-plus municipality practice. Our firm has the ability to provide a wide, wide range of services for clients, which, you know, used to be 20 years ago, even 10 years ago, you could do a lot as a solo practice. But now there are so many issues in municipalities involving environmental issues, labor and employment issues, bankruptcy, things like that, that get more intricate and more involved. We have the resources in our firm to be able to address all those issues. Our Manchester firm, our Manchester office, I should say, is primarily public sector. It's about half school practice and about half municipal, and we have some labor and employment as well, and they do almost exclusively public sector employment work. We also have one immigration attorney, which is an interesting actoid, but again, nothing with municipal. So we've built over the years, I, when I came to the firm, there was just myself and Carrie Anne Roman, who's also has a lot of experience in this municipality. And after a few years, we wound up merging with Gardner-Fulman Waugh. You may have heard the name Bernie Waugh before in New Hampshire. That was his firm. And they joined us in 2019. And at that point, we basically doubled our personnel and also brought on, you know, some more municipal clients to the full. And, you know, we're the kind of, we're a very collaborative practice. We love what we do. We love working in municipal law. We love coming to these meetings. We love being at town meetings. We love working on all these various issues. So it's just something that is, we're very passionate about. And Lee just joined us this year out of law school, so she's now just learning the ropes and, you know, how complicated this area can be at times, but I wanted her to come along so you can meet her, because she's sort of the future, you know, moving along here and some of us, but she's coming up the ranks now, so.
Exciting.
But yeah, that's us. I mean, it's just something, you know, that's, we're basically, we look at ourselves as having a deep bench, providing full range of services, and responsive, get to, you know, get to issues quickly. We don't believe in making you wait. We understand, you know, time is always running out on everything. So that's just how we practice.
Response time is usually what?
Well, it depends on the issues. Depends on timing. Normally, you will at least hear back from someone, hopefully within the same business day.
Okay.
If not, the next day. But again, if it's something that is easy to answer quickly, you know, you could do that within a matter of a few hours, assuming we're not in court or whatever. But one thing I do wanna add, we don't believe in sort of the dispatch model. If you were to be with us, you would have basically two attorneys as your contacts. Most likely it'd be me and actually probably Lee. And that's who you get if you call. I mean, one of us will be there to answer your call or to answer your email or whatever. If I'm on vacation, obviously, if I'm in court at a trial, you know, we have people cover if necessary, but, you know, we have cell phones now. It's, you know, I give out my cell number on my card, you know, you text me, you email, whichever, whatever you need to do. Because again, everything has changed, you know, including the way the practice works, the way your business works. We need to be able to be available at all different times. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I know some people, I've heard in other firms, you know, kind of call and you get whoever's available, but you don't get, you know, whoever that one person is that you're used to speaking with. We feel that's important and builds strong relationships. In the end, that's what this is all about, is relationships. You need to be comfortable with us. We obviously wanna be comfortable with you. We think that's the best way to build that.
When you first, I guess, come on board with a town or a school district, I guess, what's the process for you to kind of learn what our challenges are, but also kind of, I guess, where we are with existing, you know, RSAs and everything, how the town is running currently? What's that process of sort of downloading that information?
Well, normally what I like to do, aside from what we learn here in this kind of interview process, is once we, if you were to come with us, we obviously first clear any conflicts and make sure we don't have any problems with the town as a general client, which I don't know of any off the top of my head. We then do an engagement letter for general services, and we keep it open-ended. So, and there's no contract, there's no term. You know, you're with us as long as you want. You're free to go when you want. But I, I'm a big believer in having sort of a follow-up, sort of meet and greet thing to go over. It doesn't have to be in a, you know, like this. It could just be with a few of us, just to go over the issues for the town, what's happening, what cases you have, whatever those things are, and strategize how we're gonna deal with everything. A lot of times, you might have some litigation that's pending. You have certain attorneys that might be dealing with that. Sometimes it's a good idea to let them finish it. You don't wanna reinvent the wheel. You don't wanna spend more money than you have to. But we would do that, and that would, you know, that would be at a reduced rate. I would reduce the charging, not charge for travel or something, because that's important as a part of the jumping off point to get things going. And yeah, we could do that on Zoom, I suppose, but I don't know. I, I still haven't embraced remote participation. We have to do it a lot for things, and I'll do it, but I'd much rather be in person with you, face-to-face. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
And how we get, that's how we'd approach that.
How is that you're available?
Beg your pardon?
How is that you're available to us?
Well, our office, most of us are available, you know, I'm usually around in my office by 8:30, and they're, it'll go 5 o'clock or later. But again, it's, you know, the way the world works now, you could shoot me an email at 7 o'clock at night or Saturday morning or something, and I may want to get it back to you that weekend if I happen to see it and I'm able to do that, because I, you know, we're all on, off and on all the time. There's really no day off, so to speak, I mean, unless you're on vacation. But generally, yeah, I mean, let's just say 8 to 5 weekdays, but there's also time before and after.
Okay.
And then weekends too. It's sort of like, you know, we're all busy, but you know.
Getting the jam, we need you.
Yeah, we're not gonna be, not gonna disappear on you. And where, where did the attorney go? It's been like five days I haven't heard from the attorney. That's not gonna happen, if that maybe put it in that frame, okay.
Something that you're also, is our planning board. Nottingham is growing. Developments are coming in. Obviously, our zoning ordinances over the past 20 years have probably tripled for new things that are on there. And sometimes we even have a hard time interpreting our own and then going towards RSAs and stuff like that. We've probably had a contact eight times maybe, maybe even 10 this year, with questions when developers were coming in towards different RSAs, towards what they're trying to do, and what ours and what our zoning ordinance says, and what our, our whole ordinance is for buildings and cluster subdivisions and stuff like that. Have you dealt with that quite a bit?
We deal with that.
Well, I mean, just, I mean, because that's probably one of the biggest things that we have. As this town continues to grow.
Yep.
Is that, and then it goes to zoning.
Yeah. We, we have a number of folks, yeah, who, I mean, all of us have extensive land use experience, but, you know, some more than others in terms of different capacities. But, oh yeah, there are some communities right now that we have who almost daily will have a question about, you know, so-and-so's doing this before the planning board, and they've asked it, is this, is this okay? Is this zoning gonna be a problem? I have a zoning board chair in another community who a couple times a week sends me these very, rather complicated questions actually about pending, you know, how to interpret the zoning versus the statute, et cetera, et cetera. So the answer to your question, John, yeah, we do it regularly in different permutations, depending on CBA, planning board, whatever, that come before them, so.
A lot of guidance and defending decisions.
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, both.
Well, one of my concerns that I've always had, this is not, I mean, is the interpretation you're getting. You know, it's tough to get the black and white answers that we're looking for, because everything can be interpreted in a different way.
Correct.
And as we, our zoning ordinance has grown and our, you know, developments for cluster developments, for, I mean, just all the stuff that goes through, is even again, the ordinance that we're talking about tonight, you know, are these legal to be doing to set this precedent on people's properties? And these are concerns that are coming up about people, you know, because no one wants their rights infringed on, but there is the rights of the town to say, well, you can build when you can. We become into that, and as, as we grow, these issues are gonna become more. You know, Nottingham is a nice, quiet town. We're regionally located right near the highway. Of course, I mean, everything's right here. It seems to be a very desirable place to live, as you see our houses, housing prices are. So it's, you know, again, the people, there's a lot of land still in town.
Yep.
So it's one of my concerns, is, you know, how well we're gonna interpret that. I know there's gonna be a lot that's gonna be pressed upon the planning board itself in the future to make those, but, you know, the support of what our attorneys is gonna be helpful on, you know, where we as an elected board think this is the way, you to help defend what we're trying to do.
Right, yeah.
Legally, obviously.
Right. I mean, we, we, well, we believe in, you're not calling us to tell you what not, what you can't do. You're calling us to say, how can we get to where we wanna be?
Right, exactly.
Legally. And that's what we try to do. Now, I love when it's black and white. That happens really, but I love when it happens.
But you'll hear from me most of the time is, you know, a judge would likely find or read it this way, and here's why, and give you the law. That's more of it.
That's kind of my style. You know, I'm always saying, what's the, what's the person in a black robe gonna do, most likely, depending on what you're reading?
Because that would help. I mean, again, I sat on the zoning board for probably nine years now, our planning board for like nine, so I've read enough. And that's one of the things when it comes to the answer. You have a bunch of members that are just community members, and we're trying to interpret, you know, stuff that was put in the, our law, our town thing, you know, 10 years ago.
Right, right.
Trying to justify what it was towards what new RSAs just came out with.
Yep.
You know, we need more of something of a more concrete, solid answer instead of a broad spectrum, because then we just sit about talking about it for two hours, and we're still in the same spot we're in.
You're dealing with.
If you watch some of our videos, you can see that, but that's, nothing wrong with it, but it's just.
Yeah.
You know, more focused on guidance is what I think would be helpful to us.
Right, you wanna be able to narrow that band, that focus.
Exactly.
And get out from all the, you know, side discussions.
Exactly.
Oh yeah, I get that.
So you mentioned that you'd probably be the primary point of contact. If we call, you have an issue, and you're like, it's not really my area of expertise. You said that you have 80-some members on board or something like that, or however many members are on your board, 15, is it?
Well, in the, what you're looking at, yeah, those are various attorneys in our Manchester office. I think there's a few from our Portland office as well that.
Okay.
For example, we have bond counsel, both in Maine, and I have someone in my office who does New Hampshire certified bond counsel work, as well as general municipal. So you sort of, if you have finance questions, bond questions, he's probably the one you'd work.
Okay. But everything would come to you.
Yeah.
You would find where we needed to be.
Hmm?
So back to that kind of single point of contact.
Exactly.
Moving forward, and then we might be dealt with a specialist for wherever we needed to go.
Right. Like if you had a, a bond issue, for example, and it's rather complicated, you know, I would have Stephen Whitley is who I talked to. I would do the introduction and make sure that it's done. And then of course, you know, Stephen can work with you directly. He don't have to be involved, but, but yeah, you wouldn't just be left having to ask for someone who can do, you know, I would, you know, move that along to where it needs to be, if it's not something I would be doing personally, or if Lee was not doing.
You get the Manchester office, not on the Portland office?
Yes, we're, we're the Manchester. That's, that's where the 95% of what you would need would be done through Manchester general attorneys.
Fee structure would be the same?
Beg your pardon?
Fee structure would be the same?
Well, the fee structure, we have for the New Hampshire general practice, which includes litigation and any guidance work, anything, is the standard, is that rate that we quoted, which next year goes to 255. This year it's 245. If you, we need to bring in someone like the environmental person we have who's up in Portland, or we have a labor person from Manchester who might, he might need labor assistance for whatever issue, that would be higher. That would, I don't know what their rate's gonna be, but it might be low 300s. But the idea is you're not using them very much. It's, it's very, you know, a short band of work, but quite frankly, you know, we believe in having the best person do the work who's gonna be the most efficient, because in the end, that saves them money rather than having someone who's, who's not as knowledgeable in that area, spending more time, which is more money. As odd as it, it's gonna be coming from a lawyer's mouth, we're not trying to make as much money as few as we can. We're trying to get the job done, get you what you need, and keep it cost-effective, because we know the budgets. Every year we see them. We all go to the town meetings. Every year I hear the same things about budgets, and we know what's going on, and we try to keep those costs low.
So, you mentioned town meetings. We're at SB2 town.
Okay.
We don't have town meetings no more.
Yeah.
Well, we have deliberatives.
You do, but you don't.
Yeah, it's a little, that was my question that I have written right here for my next.
When is your, are you a?
March.
Which, your March meeting, so you have February?
Correct.
Is your deliberative?
Yes.
The first Saturday?
Correct.
And we find that we have a lot of petition articles now, because now you're allowed. So, and then, you know, for one case we had years ago, the town got sued for, and it passed by one vote at, at town. We still had town meeting, but it was still brought by another faction, whatever. It wasn't actually brought upon the town. It was private people that put it in. How would, have you dealt with situations like that? Because I think this year, we might have five petition articles from people?
Hmm.
Maybe more? You know, on interpreting those and, you know, I mean, what the people vote on, and whether they're legal to go through and where they're.
Binding up, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, we get those pretty, pretty regularly, whether it's traditional or SB2. Do you normally have your council at SB2 deliberative?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, excited to made a note of that. We have a few other clients who have that Saturday meeting, because our goal is, of course, to get them all staffed. But the nice thing is, we have with the school lawyers, we're sort of transferable when it comes to public, like town meetings or school meetings. And I've covered school meetings before, and they've covered our town meetings for us sometimes if we can't be there. That's one of the rare moments where, you know, you might not have me there, because someone else, like I'm actually committed to another community usually for that Saturday meeting, but we would have someone fully capable there, whether it's, it might be a school person or it might be someone else from our municipal department. But they all have extensive experience doing traditionally in SB2, so.
Would you guys be able to provide any input at the meeting, so if these last-minute ones do come up, that you can at least be like, hold up, this doesn't pass the sniff test, you're just gonna waste your time, or if you would like to go down this road, the words need to be this. Technically, New Hampshire, you're allowed to pass anything.
Input, yeah.
But I think a lot of people in town, while their intentions may be one way, could be at a different, they don't wanna have it be something that's gonna be rebuked through law or something like that. They're gonna wanna have it be as legal as they can for whatever point they're trying to make. So I think we've had a kind of a quietness at the other deliberatives or town meetings, where it's like, is this good? And it's like, need a little bit more than that. Okay, well, we'll send this off. And then it goes through everything, and then you come to find out, wow, that was not binding, or maybe it wasn't, and then you end up in a six-month legal battle to have it overturned.
I mean, my style's always been, I mean, the moderator is your most important person, and I wanna know who that moderator is and work closely with that moderator, leading up to a town meeting, especially if you're gonna have a complicated one. So that's a good idea to have a little pre-meeting with your moderator and me and somebody else. But when I see an art warrant coming in, like, just problematic articles, I'd normally like to talk to the moderator ahead of time, and say, hey, you know, and usually the moderator, a good one will catch the same thing and say, I saw articles, you know, eight, nine, and 10, these seem troubling to me. So yeah, I see the same thing, and we'll chat about it and say, this is what, you know, my opinion of that is. And usually moderator will say, you know, I'm gonna read article, blank, blank, blank. You know, council has informed me that it's not a binding article, it passes, or what, you know, that kind of thing. A lot of times the moderator only makes that announcement. Or frankly, just ask council. Or frankly, just ask counsel to take the microphone and explain it to folks. Had that come up before, too. Explain and leave it, you know, you go to a town meeting, you never know what's going to happen. So you get it to your toes.
How many clients do you personally represent? Are you the main point of contact for?
Let's see, I'm just trying to think, if we have one recently, one of our, when I say shareholder, that's basically a partner. She went on a medical leave. Christine Phil Johnston, I don't know if you know her from NHMA, she's been there. She should be coming back in mid-January. So we're kind of covering for her stuff. So if I include those, I'd say somewhere around twenty, give or take twenty. Different sizes, you know, some are very small here from a few times a month, some are larger. And I get those questions, that John was asking about the zoning, about the developments coming into planning board, and almost daily, you know, from some communities. So it ranges. In that range.
Okay, thank you.
Plus or minus, yeah.
And then in your, in the quote, it calls out specifically labor employment legal services are charged at a different rate, as well as municipal bond counsel services. But are you saying that there's other specialized services that would also be at a different rate?
Yes, if you were to use, for example, environmental.
Yeah.
Or our bankruptcy department, which normally you don't have to. Most of the bankruptcy stuff you deal with is not going to be that complicated, but on the rare rate that you do. And off the top of my head, that's about the extent of it. It's normally labor and employment is going to be who you're going to for a specialized service. Or bond, finance and bond for some of that work. That's about, yeah, that's about all of it.
Anything else from? Well, I mean, I'm just going off specific ideas, so nothing to me in general, because. Like one thing that we just had is that we had a petition article that passed three years ago. About a lot of our, what we were considering fire lanes, or you were considering emergency ways, that now became town roads. All right, but there's a lot of discrepancy, because there's no map of where that road is. So whether it crosses somebody's line or what it doesn't. Or if we need to do maintenance on it, and that person's property, that purpose property line goes across there. For, say, one side and both sides of the road, who's legally, if we need to do work there and we can't, are we legally allowed to do work? I mean, these are, have you, I mean, it's a lot of, I guess, it's a question you'd have to look into, but I'm probably being vague on it, because I'm definitely going to stay vague on it, but.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to be specific.
You know, that's, that's going to be something that's going to have issues with us coming up.
Yeah.
Because even people that want to subdivide or change on the road, what door, you know, what can, you know, it's a town road, but, you know, it's not, the planning board's going to come up and say, well, the town road's not built to the standard of where it's supposed to be, it's already come up in one situation. Have you had any of the, I see some of the towns that you have here, I know there's lakes and stuff on it.
Oh, yeah.
And there's private ways that become public ways, have you had any experience dealing with stuff like that?
Very much, yes, I mean, we've all dealt with road, just keeping with the road theme, I mean, road themes. Every permutation, yeah, like Moulton Borough is one of our clients, I did a whole, had a whole thing with them once about the accessways that we had to do with private roads and the whole collision between those two rights. And then, you know, Butters, who had rights to what, you know, it's just.
And some of these go back so far that it's tough to interpret where.
Oh, I've had some kind of, something was from like nineteen thirty-two, or some old plan, and, you know, shows the road here.
Yeah, supposedly there's a road that goes right behind our building here. That hasn't been here in a hundred and fifty years, but there is supposedly a road that goes back there.
So, yeah, I mean, we've, we've encountered, the interesting thing is, you know, oftentimes, none of these are exactly alike. You know, there's always a little bit of a twist to all of them. So your exact scenario, maybe not, but something very similar. Number of us have probably encountered at some point in twenty years, that some of us have been doing this.
Since I've gotten to Drummond, I get all kinds of different assignments, and somehow they all lead back to roads. And I'm knocking on Matt's door again, I'm like, well, I have another question about roads, but.
Well, we're a three-hundred-year-old town.
Right.
So we have a lot of byways and disways that were.
Rangeways, maybe?
Whatever.
There is.
Whatever you want to call it, how they, how they go through, or where they went through, or they're never quite plotted out to say, this is where it is, and people's properties, and. You're infringing, but the town needs to do services on them, but that person might not want you to do services. Because it might infringe with the stone wall, or it might do this, and you're saying, well, it needs to be for. Just to, those issues are arising.
They will, they will keep, they will keep coming.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I've, that's most of my stuff, so.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
No, our next appointment's now.
Thank you guys very much for your time and coming in, we appreciate meeting you. And we'll be making a decision shortly, so we'll be in contact one way or the other. All right, guys?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks.
You too.
Diane? Hi, how are you tonight? I'm well, thank you. As we start off like we did before, for the past. Our famous photographer, Steve. The big things are done now, Steve, since you got there, so we're good. You want to tell us a little about your firm, and what you could do for the time?
Um, I do, I'll have to dig one out for you.
Dig one out, okay.
You can get one out.
I am, I've been with Sol Leslie Kidder, Sabre, and Lowman for, I hate to say it, around forty years, been there a long time. The law firm was established in nineteen fifty-five by Louis Sol, who was really one of the first attorneys in New Hampshire that was involved in municipal law back then. There weren't many attorneys who looked into municipal law, represented municipalities, and all started with the town assailant. Much more competitive these days than back when the firm was established. Most of our practice involves representing school districts and municipalities throughout the state of New Hampshire. So I do a lot of work with towns, work with them in all aspects of what they need, general advice, writing ordinances, litigation, defending the town, doing the deliberative sessions, the town meetings. We have some clients that still have a traditional town meeting, but we do the full gamut of municipal law. We do not have bond counsel. We're a smaller firm, we have nine attorneys. But I've been doing this for many years, and a lot of what comes in front of me or on my desk, I've dealt with before. So it doesn't take you as long to deal with things as it would be when you first start out in the business. Which age comes some benefits.
How many towns do you represent?
I think it's probably about twelve towns.
That you personally represent?
I do most of the town work. We have some towns that we do special work for, like we're not general counsel for them. But there are attorneys that do the collective bargaining, or they do the employment law, but they have other general counsel. For most of the towns, we represent the selectmen and the land use boards. There, there are towns that have separate counsel for land use and separate counsel for the select board, so.
But you deal, you've dealt a lot with the planning and zoning aspects of that.
Absolutely.
She wrote a lecture series.
Right. It's, for the work that we do with towns, a lot of it is the land use. Seems to be the most prevalent areas where you need advice. Since the statutes were amended to establish the Housing Appeals Board, it makes it easier for people to bring cases challenging a ZBA or a planning board decision are much more expedited. So there's, there's been more cases, because it's lower cost, more, more efficient than going to Superior Court with appeals. But we do that to help with zoning ordinances, crafting them, reviewing them. For most of my towns, I think I've looked at all of their proposed zoning amendments already, trying to work with the, whoever it is in the town who's in charge of getting the ballots, getting the questions for the ballots, getting them in the right order, looking at the legal aspects. Some of our towns, since they're smaller, they don't have planners, you know, like the town assailant would have a planner. They rely on administrative staff, as well as the local planning commissions that might, might give them day-to-day advice and attend the, the ZBA or the planning board meeting for the towns, so.
Your response time?
I, myself, am not a very patient person, and I don't like to be kept waiting. So I will respond, if I'm in the office, almost immediately. I, I try to treat every client as if you're my only client. Your work is important, and I, if I get an email and I'm sitting at my desk, depending what the subject is, I might be able to answer it right away. If it takes a little longer, I'll say, well, I'll get back to you later this afternoon. But I try to be pretty immediate, because I know that if you're asking a question, you're waiting on an answer. Because there's some action that you're trying to take that may depend on the answer. If it's in between board meetings, you don't have that press, you know, like with planning. You don't really get in between ZBA meetings, because most ZBAs will make their decision that night, although they have the ability to continue it, to make their decision. They'll say, our next meeting is such and such a date, just make sure you have it for me before then. But I try to get it done right away if I can.
Yeah, my concern is that with our planning board, you know, the, the changeover rate, it's going to be high. Community involvement and people being, you know, wanting to step up to take these positions. You know, they get on, and then they realize they don't want to be there anymore, then they're gone, and then you have new people coming on. So that's where the, why I think you've seen, I've seen, I think, an, how many times we have to contact the attorney, just because of interpretations of what's going on. New members trying to know, and I, not at every meeting, but, you know, it's, you know, where I think the guidance of what we're seeing, what we're going to futurably see from our attorney is going to be beneficial to those boards. Especially when you can get boards that, members that can be negatively, they don't want to see, even though there's no right for denial. But they don't want to see it. Now, that could become an issue down the road. So that's where I think our attorney's going to have to be a big aspect of that, where, you know, people getting on boards, and they're not going as for their, the community aspect. I'm not speaking generally, but sometimes their own opinions become, you know, more of the focus.
Now, are your land use boards elected or appointed?
All elected.
Makes a difference.
Yeah.
From the perspective of.
So again, you just don't know who's going, it's.
Right.
We're not picking, there's, we don't know who's going to be there, who's going to run, who's not going to run, who's going to be there next. We haven't had any issues. But, you know, as I've talked to people in different around towns, and you read things, you, it's not like it hasn't happened around in other towns and stuff like that. So just hopefully it won't be here.
It is difficult, because I know from some of the towns I work with that have gone from appointed to elected planning board or zoning board members. You lose some people who don't want anything to do with the political process. They're happy to serve on a board, to be appointed, and maybe have been a very valuable asset over the years for a town. But once it becomes elected, they don't want to have anything to do with it. I have some towns, one in particular, that has had difficulty getting, getting ZBA members. So having difficulty having the five ZBA members, so when an applicant comes, they have the ability to continue it if it's not a full board. And they've had months and months where they can't get a full board and having difficulty appointing people. So I think it really is a problem. I mean, as you know from being on this board, there's a lot of time and energy involved in doing that, commitment to doing it. Planning board, ZBA, you know, visiting the site, whether you do it individually, whether you do it as part of a meeting. There's a lot involved in that, you just can't show up at the meeting and expect to understand everything that's going on. Planning board, you've got to look at the plans, look at the information that's been submitted, rely on whoever it is you helping you interpret, or look at the technical information, it could be the planning commission. But it, it takes a lot of work.
And then, I guess, similar to the other firm we asked, and we're an SB two town, so we have, are deliberative in early February. How many towns do you represent that are SB two?
The first Saturdays, one that a bunch of the, many of my towns have, and fortunately, some of them are near each other. And I have clients that I've been with for many years, and I'll say, okay, I'm going to be here at nine, your meeting. You know, some of them, one of them has, their meeting starts after the school district's meeting, they hold them back to back. I'll be right over as soon as mine ends, and they're perfectly content, because I have my cell phone, I can do, you know, I can respond. And then I'll tell the moderator and the select board of the first town, if I get a call from the other town, I'm going to have to leave. And people have been pretty understanding about that. I mean, we're a smaller firm, so we try to make sure if our clients can divvy up between the first and the second Saturday. You know, some people are flexible, some people aren't, that's, you're the first Saturday all the time, you try to do that. But, you know, you can't be in two places at once, but try to accommodate. You know, and some of, as I said, some of my clients I've been dealing with for years, and dealing with the same town administrator. Many of the same people on the select board, and we've gone over the warrant, we've looked at, provided if there's petition articles that may be of concern, have a letter, have a game plan in effect to deal with it, so. We have, as I said earlier, do have some towns that still have a traditional meeting. Some of our school districts up north, some of the smaller districts, they, they have their own March, March meetings. Some of them are so small, they have their elections right there before the meeting. And I, I just like seeing all that, seeing democracy in action, and going to all the various places in this state.
So other members of the firm would be able to cover deliberative?
They could, they could. We sometimes, I mean, we sometimes have trouble on that first Saturday, and we have other attorneys in other firms that have, we've helped them out. If they're a smaller municipal law firm and have conflicts, we may cover theirs, and we try to, if we have an issue, getting experienced attorneys in municipal law. We wouldn't just say, here's a body, and this person's there. We, we, we take seriously our obligations to our clients in getting you good replacement, if that's what needs to be.
Availability, you're available if we need you at night or a weekend?
Yes, yes, I mean, part of.
That we do, but.
Well, I mean, it's.
It's nice to know.
Have to be flexible, I'm usually there at eight-thirty in the morning, don't leave. I'm usually there at eight thirty in the morning, don't leave till five thirty, but it's a part of the job, doing night meetings, coming out at night, attending board meetings, doing things on the weekend, whatever's needed.
Then if you're not available with a smaller firm, I guess if you're on vacation or out of town, who would the next point of contact be for the town?
Well, we have Attorney Lohman, who's in our Wolfborough office is available, Attorney Graham in the Salem office, very experienced in, in municipal law that could be there. What we try to do is particularly with new clients, sometimes you don't know who to call, but I would be doing primarily all the law. We have an attorney in the office that's a real estate attorney. If you had a conservation commission, purchasing of land, I wouldn't do that because I'd just be running to him and saying, what do I need to do here? So we would have like Peter Braunstein do that because that, that's really primarily what he does, but we have ample coverage.
I think that's a big part too for us here is our conservation commission. You know, all our, when any property that comes out of current use, you know, that ten percent charge goes straight to them for them to be available to, when their main purpose is purchasing land. They're actually, you know, in the process of purchasing, you know, some acreage on Stevens Hill right now. There's, so I mean, that's a, there's a good amount of money that's there and that's what it's made for focusing us on purchasing land. So they have been able to secure quite a bit of property over the past years in the town due to that. So that is something that is definitely an asset that we need.
Right. I mean, it's, I mean, the, the conservation commission has much more flexibility, as you know, in purchasing land than the Select Board does unless you've adopted...
Yeah, they have to, they have to come through us to get the final approval.
Right, you have to get that, but I don't know if you've adopted, I would say forty-one, fourteen A and the selectmen having the authority to...
To acquire land, yes.
Buy and sell land. If, there are some towns that I represent that the voters just don't trust the Select Board to deal with buying and selling land and they have tried to enact that enabling statute which gives the selectmen that authority to no avail. So you know, it all depends on the particular locality of what they're comfortable with, what they want to do. So I mean, conservation has a statutory authority with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So that's much more flexibility than most Select Boards have themselves when you're dealing with town property or the purchase where without those statutes, you're going to have to go to town meeting to do any of that.
We have something, just give us space to name it, but a lot of our new developments are traditional two acres. They're one acres and then we put like half it in conservation of the land. One of the things that's coming up, and it's been coming up is, have you dealt with anybody on how policing of those properties, the protected properties are? Do you know what I'm saying? Is that like a...
For the boundaries of the conservation area and wetlands?
Well, people encroaching on, on people doing stuff they shouldn't be, you know, one of our things is our policy is that we're having a hard time policing a lot of that area. And then when we find somebody infracting, you know, what do we do? Have you dealt with any situations like that?
Yes.
You know, because again, the more of these developments that we're putting in, you know, where it's twenty houses, you know, let's say it's a hundred acre lot, sixty acres of that land is now in conservation as part of the development easement to get there.
Like is that open space development?
Open space development, sorry, that's exactly what it is. I don't know why I couldn't think of that. I've been dealing with it years, but, but the problem is that, you know, they put it there, but then you find people doing stuff that, you know, because their land abuts it and they're going on there. We don't, have you dealt with, like how to deal with that and such, have you...
They have, one of my towns has in their open space ordinance, the requirement, I think it's part of the subdivision rates because you can implement through your subdivision rates, more specific regulations, requiring posted signs, boundary markers that are part of the Planning Board approval and they don't sign off on the plan until the monuments and those and that. And those are helpful because sometimes you see these open space developments where part of what you would think traditionally is someone's lot, the back of it is open space. It depends on how the developer does it. It's not necessarily all together where there's a clear delineation of where someone's usable area of their lot is and where the open space is, that they would require the posting of signs just as a way for someone who purchases the land to know, could be a no cut buffer, no cutting beyond this point. And then it becomes a matter of enforcement.
That's our problem.
Where you get complaints. Most towns respond to complaints. They don't generally have code enforcement that's going out throughout the town looking for issues, but when they get the complaints, I do a lot of work with code enforcement officers and building inspectors and have had a lot of success going to court on various type of code enforcement cases. The difficult part with code enforcement is the persistence of you tell the person, here's what you've done, this is what you need to do to fix it. If it, if the local officials don't get action, then oftentimes I will be asked to get involved. And what I try to do is send a letter, official letterhead, you know, certified mail saying, you've been told to do X, Y, and Z, they've asked you many times, you're in violation, this is what you need to do, this is the date by which you need to do it. And if you don't do it, we will use all available remedies and go to court. So that has been successful, but it takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
When I first became an attorney, I was a law clerk in the New Hampshire Superior Courts, so I got to work with the trial court judges. And I think part of the success I have with these cases is from that experience of how judges look at them. They don't want you to first go into court and say, this person's doing this and we want you judge to fix it. They, they want to see you're a town that has basically done everything conceivable to work with people, to have them comply. And when they don't do it, then you go to court. And I think the court can be very sympathetic to that, but it takes a lot of energy, takes a lot of follow-up because you probably have people in the town that have a lot to do with their job and not just code enforcement. So it's, it's finding it, keeping on top, being very clear about what your expectations are, when they have to do that. And I always encourage my towns, if someone is working to fix it, that they are responding, they appear to be responding, to work with them in, you know, if they need a little bit more time, you do it. Clearly it depends on the nature of the violation, whether or not you can afford to do that or not, but it's, you know, you, I think you could do some things in your ordinance if you don't have all that might with open space.
We have all the signs and stuff like that, but there's been issues in the past with, you know, people, you know, not respecting that land. You know, and it's one of the things was, that's come up over the years is we don't have anybody to police it. You know, so we're putting all this land, thinking we're doing the great thing for it, but if you're not actively trying to keep it protected, then are you doing everything you can? That's just my personal feeling on it. So it's just something where I'd like to see more.
Do you have like conservation easements on that or is it just maintained by the homeowners association?
Well, sometimes there isn't a homeowners association, that's the problem. So there's, it's, open space has just become something that we've done over the past. I mean, it wasn't around, I think it just came around ten years ago or fifteen years ago. I mean, Francesco Way was the first one that we actually did any type of that open space. So it's something that, it's becoming more prevalent because of the fact that it's cheaper for the developer to build the property. So it's, why build a traditional two acre one when you can do, save yourself all the money?
Well, in, for most towns, depending on what your ordinance says, you get all the great land, you get all the wetlands and, and the other stuff.
Well, ours, you can't do that. Yeah, we did that where...
Not all towns do.
You can only have fifty percent of the bad land, of the, all the wetlands and it has to be all good, other good lands. You can't just make your development on good and take all the non-buildable stuff and throw it in there as your conservation land. They don't let you do that.
Okay, well, that's good because some towns don't, don't have that, but it is very difficult. And I think it's the resources that you want to put into code enforcement. Code enforcement is one of those areas of the law purely discretionary. So even if you get a violation and neighbors, for instance, are complaining, you're not obligated to go to court to resolve it. You have discretion, you know? What's the nature of the offense versus how much time and energy are you going to expend? You can if you go to court.
And we don't want to go to court.
Prevail?
We need some sort of response. What happens is that you need that lawyer letter, that's something that tells the person, hey, listen.
And I mean, I, I think the A word sometimes does, does the, the attorney letter gets it in, not always, but you know...
That's why I was just asking about your experience about doing that.
No, I do a lot of that.
It's going to, again, I think we've been quite, I wouldn't say lucky, but you'd say fortunate that we haven't had as many issues as we possibly could, but as we grow and get bigger and things happen, I think these are bound to be in the forefront of, they're coming.
Right.
So I'm going to ask any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Look at that timing.
Seven thirty.
Right for a public hearing.
Perfect.
All right, so we're going to open this up right now to our public hearing on the acceptance of the HOP grant funds. Here's the public hearing notice, the Nottingham Select Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA thirty-one ninety-five dash B regarding the acceptance of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars of unanticipated funds from the Housing Opportunity Planning, HOP grant is what I call it. This award is being received from the Invest New Hampshire Municipalities Planning and Zoning Grant Form Program, sorry, funding by the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs as part of the one hundred million dollar Invest New Hampshire Initiative with AR, ARPA State Fiscal Recovery Funds. This award has been administered jointly by New Hampshire Housing, Plan New Hampshire, and the New Hampshire UNH Co-op Extension. Guys, any questions?
No. These funds will be used as part of the master plan process, to be clear.
So during our Planning Board things, we had discussion on it. We had our representative speak about it, who actually helped us get the grants. So some of the money we would like to see go towards the master plan and it'd be specific, specific towards just housing, not towards the general thing, just civic, and then also looking at housing opportunities in town for more affordable housing. You know, are there ways of changing zoning ordinances and, and stuff like this and even different planning ordinances to make it more appeal, to get these types of housings into your condos or stuff like this, where we have quite a few restrictions. If you read through the zoning things ordinance that aren't really, I mean, we do have all the things in there, so we're not against any state law, but whether we make it more friendly is one of the questions that are more suitable for developers. Because like developers aren't coming into Nottingham looking for a fifty-five-year-old community because again, we don't offer any, no water, no sewer, none of this, you know, the houses being in the smaller things. So it's, but one of their big things about this, by accepting this money, anything going forward is the fact that they really want us to have public opinion on any decisions that are being made with how this money is being spent. So it's not something where it's just here's a blank check of thirty-one thousand, we can go spend it. They want to make sure the residents of the town are well-versed and well, you know, informed in having public meetings about what we're spending money on, why we're doing it, or, or what is in getting the opinion back. So it will be something that will be time-consuming in order to figure out where the money's going to go, how we're going to get it, and what the town residents feel about how this money should be spent. So it's not just something where the board has discretion to just write it any way that they want, you know, or spend it any way that they want. But I think that people know that the master plan is something that will take a little portion of this, won't take, I mean, you know, if it takes twenty-five percent, it'd be something, because it's just doing the housing, but how we use it, the rest in order to try to benefit Nottingham in the future and the growth. So, and again, his whole, his whole spiel was on the, I probably didn't do justice for what he was, but it's on last week's Planning Board meeting, you can hear the conversation that we had, or you can look at the minutes, but I don't know if they'll be all on there, but that is on YouTube.
That was the planner that...
Yes.
That's Blair Heaney.
Yeah, Blair.
And John, a shout-out to the town website, this is great information about the town website.
There too. Thank you.
So one of the things I saw on there was that it recommended that we have a, like a, a public representative.
Planning committee.
Do we need to, how do we go about doing that or what?
You know, again, here it's, since we'll be probably working a lot with Blair on this, since he's the SRPC rep, do you guys want to have that more as the Planning Board to have those discussions and then bring it into this board? That's who they want to have?
Yeah, no, I guess so. And then, then they bring it to us for the formal...
For the approval?
Yeah, that's fine. That makes sense. I just wanted to make sure, kind of just discuss it.
I mean, this grant is for the town, but since it is involved with planning, I think it should be...
Makes more sense that the Planning Board...
I mean, they got a lot on their plate, but you know, I think it's something where, I mean, there's no, I think we have eighteen months or something, so we have a good portion of time.
And there's like every two months we need to do a report back.
Right, so it'll be a probably, you know, a certain, they'll probably have to put a lot of timeframe in the meeting, you know, have a quick conversation about it or what they're doing. But I mean, that's what's going to be nice of having Blair at those meetings.
Yeah.
So. Anybody in the public have any questions on this?
Who's going on?
He is the representative from SRPC who's kind of like our town planner, but...
That's, that's the official regional?
Yes.
Thank you.
He has been a vital, a very important person to have at our Planning Board meetings with all our new members. Do we have a motion? Since the public, there is none.
I make a motion to accept thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars in anticipated funds from the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant.
Sorry. Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Nope.
All set for a vote? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? There we go.
Close the public session now?
Close, yeah, I'm sorry.
Earring?
There you go. Close the public hearing. And now we will go on to the Town Administrators' Reports.
All right.
Could you be, John, is, when are road maintenance going to come up tonight?
Yeah, that's going to be after we, we're going to Town Administrator Report, we're going to do assessing, then action items, then we're doing budget review, and then it becomes, then we go to road maintenance.
Okay. Just for a formal announcement, I know you are all aware because I tried to make you aware as soon as it happened, but our brand-new Ford F-150 Cruiser, which is the new pickup truck that just went into service about a month and a half ago, was...
For the police department.
For the police department, was damaged. There was a lithium battery explosion in the MDT, which is the mobile data terminal, their computer that ties them into the database. Officer Joe Lister was in the vehicle when it happened. He was steadfast in removing the unit from the Cruiser, preventing further damage, but... But with that being said, there was damage to the interior of the Cruiser and the electronic, the electronics within the vehicle. So, um, we did file an insurance claim. There were several adjusters that came out and looked at it. There was question as to whether or not they were going to repair or total, but in the end, they did settle on repairing it. So it is currently at Cousteau's Auto Body, getting the, um, inside of the cabin repaired. And then once that repair is completed, it'll go to OSP Mountain Electronics for new electronics outfitting, so.
Is it a new cruiser?
The brand-new Cruiser.
Oh.
Correct.
And how, what was he doing?
Um, Joe is doing fine. He is, I, I don't know if he's come back to work yet or not. He did have second-degree burns on his hand. Um, it burned his jacket, so we're just, we're very fortunate that it wasn't a more significant event. But obviously, like I said, he was, he was very steadfast. It was very heroic, his actions. It could have been a lot worse of a situation if it was left in the vehicle, so. Um, yes, so. Um, so my, my, my news and announcements unfortunately seems to be around equipment and vehicles, so I'll just carry on. Um, our recently acquired Ford F-350 for the Highway Department was losing compression, so it was brought into the shop. Um, five of the injectors were replaced. Um, the, the head was fine, so it was just a matter of replacing the injectors. And I think we were able to get ahold of the parts fairly inexpensive. So, um, it was put back in service as of today. They were test-driving it to make sure there was no further issues, which none were reported to me before the end of the day. So we're hoping that, um, that was, you know, all it will need and it will be able to continue to serve the needs of the Highway Department. Um, the parts for the motor replacement, the six-wheel dump truck that's been out of service since late summer, those are now in, and the truck is scheduled for repair this week. I think that's about it for equipment. Um, there is a help-wanted advertisement posted on the town's website, seeking part-time or per diem help to help out at the recycling center. Uh, what we're really looking for is we're actively seeking people that might be willing to serve, you know, maybe a day here or there, cover vacation absences, illnesses, or even just a supplement during peak times. It would be nice to have really a rolling-on-call list to be able to fill those voids. Um, we're at three people on staff. One of them's out on medical leave for time to be undetermined at this point. So, um, they are, they are short and we never like, like it to get to the point where there's only one person on at the recycling center working. There's plenty of work to be done around equipment and, um, so anybody that would be willing to step into that position. There are job applications over at the recycling center on the town's website and in the town office. So, um, again, you don't have to commit to the three and a half days that they're either open to the public or working behind the scenes, but even, you know.
So how many, do you have three?
We have, we have three part-timers, but one of them is out on medical leave right now.
We've actively been seeking employment for a while for the, the recycling center. Have we had any applicants in?
We do. We have an application.
We have one?
We have one. We'll be discussing it tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Just one?
Yes, so far, just one. Um, you already took care of the Housing Opportunity Plan Grant, so thank you for doing that. Um, moving on to my action items, I would be looking to follow up on that Housing Opportunity Plan Grant. We have a contract or an agreement, rather, with Strafford Regional Planning Commission. They're obviously the ones that drafted the grant application for us. Um, but they are offering to, they're offering their assistance with preparing, preparing the housing chapter of the town's master plan in accordance with this grant. Um, they've provided an outline of how that will work and a fee structure base, which obviously falls within the grant award. So I would be looking for a motion to enter into an agreement. And the way that they have the agreement written right now, it has me as the authorized representative, so it would be a motion to accept their agreement and further authorize me to execute the agreement.
How much is the?
How much is the agreement for? Is that what you're asking? Twenty-eight thousand? It's in the selectmen folder over there. I think it was 28,000 even, but I can pull it up too. Yes, 28,000. So, um, technical assistance portion of it would be 15,000. That would include data analysis, GIS analysis, custom mapping, scenario planning, and draft preparation. And then the community engagement portion would be, um, surveying the community, a public forum, planning board workshops, planning board meetings, and final adoption hearing for an additional 13,000, so 28,000 altogether. And they would be billed at the actual cost, so that's just an estimate provided based on, um, we are not currently a member of Strafford Regional Planning. We, we didn't pay the dues to be a voting member, so it would be the upgraded fee that we're paying for Blair's time as our town planner right now.
So then that takes 28 out of 31,500, so what's that remaining portion? I know that they generated this, and this is what it's supposed to be used for. It's the anticipated three, $3,500. What's that for? Or is it just?
I, I, I think we put in for the beginning estimate, and now that they've put together their agreement for services, we obviously, we might not.
Just something, you were talking about, he thought some cost is going to be 25% and. Yeah, this is.
Of the total master plan cost.
But the grant is only for the housing section.
Right.
Okay.
Because he estimated it.
The full master plan, he over $100,000. Generated the grant.
They generated the grant, correct?
For this portion with an anticipated cost, we were awarded what we asked for.
Correct.
Now we have finalized, so is this contract good for one year or through the term of the grant through 2026 September? And will they handle the, the bi-monthly reports? Or does that get back to you and then you have to do the reports?
Um, this would all be them. This would all be Strafford Regional performing the work outlined in the agreement.
Okay.
So they would be doing the reporting, all the costs, all the activities, all the planning for it.
So then, say we have an agreement for 28 grand, we got the 31,500, $3,500. Basically, the 28 grand is spent here, but then the 35 is just, I don't want to say extra, but at the end, we say we didn't spend this on the grant, and it, it goes back as non, non-funded or non-used grant money.
But there could be additional expenses.
Right. Just covering.
We figure out something that fits in.
Up to.
Yeah.
Anticipate at 28, but we got the cap at 30.
Just want to make sure this is a slightly different thing than the, the words that John originally said. I was then confused when I hear it come up to 28, but now I'm understanding this.
It's inclusive.
Inclusive, a quarter of the overall town master plan.
No.
No.
It, it's not a quarter of the, it's only the housing chapter. It's, it's only that section. And so it's to start the process of updating the long overdue plan, but.
It's approximately a quarter of the total cost, the estimated cost of the master plan.
Correct.
Okay, that's, okay.
Is saying the master plan will cost four times that.
Yeah, over $100,000 is the estimate.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is one of the most expensive pieces of the master plan, basically.
It's the housing part of it, so yeah, it's definitely the most expensive part because it's the one that directly affects, housing affects the growth of the town, which affects all departments, which affects roads, which affects. I mean, everything goes on.
So, no, it makes sense that this is the one we're starting with, that.
Yeah, like the history part of the master plan doesn't need to be re-trived.
No.
The.
So are you looking for a motion to enter into the agreement for the dollar amount?
I didn't, I didn't think, one thing too, I didn't, you know, from our conversation on Wednesday, I didn't realize it was this much money that was going towards of that fund.
What would the rest of the money be used for? Because this is for the update of that chapter.
No, I understand. I was just, maybe I was listening differently from what I thought he was talking about, so.
Do we need to get clarification before we execute the contract?
This is, that's the.
I, I wasn't part of the planning.
The way I understand how it was supposed to work from.
The way it was presented.
The way it was originally presented to us, that he was going to do the, it would cost that much for him to do it.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, it involves more pieces than, you know, it's, there's nits and stuff inside there that weren't really discussed.
Mm-hmm.
But it's all the same fund, same amount.
I just want to make sure. I, I'm good with all that now. So are we just saying you want to request a motion to enter the agreement for the 28,000 or request to enter with Strafford Regional not to exceed the grant allowance of 31,500?
It's probably safer.
I think that's how it's. I just want to make sure I'm clarified on what you would like.
I think if you're.
I mean, they're requesting.
Just read what she says.
Will we enter the agreement with authorizing Ellen up to the 31,500?
And it says right in, in accordance with the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Award.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with Strafford Regional Planning Commission for acceptance with preparing the housing chapter of the town's master planning in accordance with the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Award and further authorize, uh, the town administrator to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
How much?
Thirty-one thousand, 500 is the total award. We have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion?
I think we did.
I'm just asking if there's any more before we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, there we go.
Just trying to see. A lot of these, um, next action items are related to our budget review. So do you want to hold off until we get to that point in general business? Or do you want me to move forward with them now?
Just move over to the budget, move over to the budget.
Okay. Um, so we'll skip ahead to your proposed 2025 board and committee meeting schedule. I only want you to focus on the select board. I have the other boards and committees reviewing their dates. Um, if you stay on schedule for the first and third Monday of each month, we have three Mondays that conflict with a holiday. Um, we have Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, and Labor Day. So what we did in 2024 was we postponed that Monday meeting to the Tuesday after. Um, obviously, January 21st and February 18th would conflict with potential ZBA meetings. I don't know what their caseload's going to be. So we could alternatively meet in conference room two, allow them to carry on their regularly-scheduled meeting, or alternatively, you could meet the following Monday and just have back-to-back, uh, back-to-back meetings. So I'd like to try to get some type of a commitment so I can get this posted to the website and considering January is two weeks away.
I'd rather do it alternate Monday.
Alternate Monday.
Preference for me.
Anybody else?
I don't have an opinion.
Doesn't make a difference to me.
So we'd be looking at Monday, January 27th, and February 24th, and September 8th.
Sorry, what was the February one?
Uh, February 24th.
January 27th.
January 27th, February 24th, September 8th. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, sometimes we had moved two dates so that we didn't end up with that super-long three-week gap. That's all I was looking for.
Mm-hmm.
But it does not appear to be that.
You're going to find it on a five-week month anyways.
Correct. I'm good.
All right, so I will get this posted to the meeting's calendar with those changes. Um, we had some correspondence in the Board of Selectmen Public Comment email. Um, Lori Anderson is just looking for confirmation on the term expirations for the select board. We have John, who is coming up in March of 2025. I think everything else looked good. Just need to confirm that with her. John Moran, sorry.
I didn't get that email.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get that email?
No.
Okay.
No, I didn't see.
We don't get the OSPC LSU forward.
No, they get forwarded. All right.
But, yeah, I mean, that's.
That's just one. Tim and Welch are the next year, and then the following year.
All right, so, yep, so I have John Decker, 2027, Matt Charlin, 2027, John Moran, 2025, Tim DaBrio, 2026, and Steve Welch, 2026. Okay, so I will confirm that with Lori. Uh, we received an email from Jean Reed looking for the balance of the Conservation Commission funds. Uh, Betsy has responded to that, so there's no further action needed. Uh, Cheryl Smith emailed looking for the 2025 meeting schedule, which you just set, so I think we're good there. Um, under general mail and other correspondence that's been received, there was a community action report that was, um, provided in the folder from the New Hampshire Department of Revenue. Um, every time they come into the town of Nottingham, they have to just file a report with the town that states what they were doing. So obviously, we're checking, measuring, and listing data, um, part of their spark.
Do you happen to know the conservation fund?
Do I know how much is in there?
Yeah.
I do. So. It was 684, I think. Um, Jean's specific question was on the current use. Which was 104,000 collected in current use taxes in 2024, but the fund balance itself. I can find it here. Uh, 483,800. Sorry, five. There's two different amounts in this. So July 21st of '23 is not going to help me. I can get the balance to you. I don't want to, I don't want to quote the wrong number. I don't think I have anything more to say.
I don't know.
I want to was in.
Talking about it, so that's why.
We talked about it last month because we, or maybe with the budget committee.
No, I was going to say it's supposed to be.
Yeah, it was budget committee because we had asked about the number that was in the meeting minutes.
Okay, yes, because I think Sam had reported like 600 and something thousand. Yeah, so I can get that amount for you. All right, um.
Well, because I'm just, never mind. It's a lot of money.
It is.
It's town people's money. So if there's that much, I think there should be somewhere down the ride, there's a meeting to say, hey, what are you guys doing? And I know they're holding it for the right, perfect opportunity, but, you know, I still just let people know that that opportunity is coming or what opportunities might be available. Because it is taxpayer money that they're holding. But, okay, go on.
Um, New Hampshire D E S, there was old correspondence, John reported at the last meeting, but we did get some correspondence from D E S on the 604B Water Quality Planning Grant that we were trying to acquire for, to update the watershed plan. Um, there was no grant funding awarded for that, but, um, John will be talking later about some alternative sources for water quality shortly. Um, we received a, a letter from New Hampshire DOT regarding, um, we were doing, we were requesting a safety audit at the intersection of, uh, 156 Deerfield and Ledge Farm Road, uh, just based on the fatal motorcycle accident last year and several other accidents that had taken place. We actually got correspondence that, uh, we were not chosen as a candidate for a safety audit because we didn't have any fatalities, even though we had provided them with data of the fatality that took place. So, um, Owen Friend Gray had taken the lead on initiating that process, so he's been corresponding with contacts, and I will be able to update you further. But as of right now, we weren't sought out as a candidate for any intersection improvements. You were noticed by certified mail on a standard dredge and fill application for 326 Stage Road. That was informational, no response required. And, uh, related to DOT Project 40612, which is the, um, the bridge repl- uh, related to DOT Project 40612, which is the, um, the bridge replacement here on Stage. Notice of offer to purchase was, um, given to Mulligan Forest?
Yeah.
Yes.
How's that work?
Um, they are looking to purchase, obviously, a chunk of land that the forest is contained with, so, um, it's through their rights to acquire. Um, they, there is a monetary value that's been assigned to it. I think it was money, $500.
Right, yeah, I saw that, but.
So it's ultimately, we're noticed because we're also owners through the easements. Um, so that's gonna go through the Conservation Commission, and then obviously, it's up to them. I mean, they can take it by eminent domain. This is the way that it makes them feel good about taking it. That's how the state works.
Can you replace that 152?
Yes.
Yeah, it's for the, to build the slopes.
The abutments.
Yeah, to the bridge.
So they have to, they have to encroach further than their.
It's still one by the school, right?
Yes.
Further up.
No, it comes all the way down there.
Yeah, through the power line.
Yeah.
It extends beyond their right-of-way.
Okay.
So they have to acquire additional.
But it's empty, had to respond within 30 days from December 6th.
Yes.
Right.
To accept the $500.
It's 500 bucks.
And we did receive, um, notification from.
Do you have a motion for us to accept that?
Um, if you would like to hear a small piece of it, it has to be obviously accepted through conservation.
Right.
And.
But if we don't meet again until.
Right, and then where does the money go or whatever?
Where does the money go?
Yeah.
It's going to come in as wherever you would like it to go. It's gonna come in and it's just an unanticipated revenue.
Okay.
So it would just go into the general fund.
Yeah.
Or you could earmark it for something. $500 of it.
Been more time thinking about, and that's where. I know. Right, right. No, I was just curious. Where is this, you know, how does this work? Because the whole Mulligan thing is multiple owners and.
I have no idea. I've never had it done so.
Yeah.
I mean, is the state just gonna take it if we don't do it? Is that?
Right, you might, right. Well, make a motion to accept their offer as far as town property is concerned. I guess what we can authorize.
Bless you.
Either that or we ask for more money and we bring eminent domain back. Tell you right now.
Yeah, four, 400 square feet of swamp.
Right.
And then an additional 700 square feet of swamp, so.
Ever want to make a motion to accept the?
Is that your motion?
Is that your motion?
That would be my motion. Alright, I'll second, sure.
Alright. That's for the planning board side of the thing. We're good with it.
The planning board?
I mean, the select board, I'm sorry.
We want to vote?
You wanna make, okay, vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. 500 bucks every.
Put the eyes above the nose.
Right, just move it on.
And the Department of Safety acknowledged December 10th that the local hazard mitigation plan that was, um, forwarded off to FEMA did receive its formal approval. So that's now in place, and it's our due diligence to refer to the plan and do all of the things that we obligated ourselves to, like community interactions and public informational sessions, so. We have our work cut out for us until the next update in five years. Um, so, yeah, like I said, I will, um, I'll hold off on the rest of the motions until we get into budget reviews.
Are you three here for the road maintenance? Do you guys mind if we just put that forward?
No.
So that we don't have to, in case we're here till 9:30 or 10:00 that.
I appreciate it.
They don't have to wait for that.
It's good to have public, though, outside of our norm.
So we're just gonna go a little out of order here. Uh, there's nothing we're assessing anyways, so we don't have to worry about that. Uh, but we're gonna move into the, uh, road maintenance policy and the, I think that's part of the winter weather road maintenance policy.
This topic is dusted off. Um, it originated with Eric Jennings from Seaman Point. Um, he has, I believe he's been in contact primarily with John Decker and Steve Rollins, the Highway Director, just wanting to know what the town's policy is. Moving forward in terms of road maintenance for both general grading and winter maintenance. So, um, I'm not sure how many of the public are aware, but there are two policies that have been in place since 2020, let's see, 2016. They were last amended in 2021, but we have a road maintenance policy and a winter and inclement weather road maintenance policy. So I just wanted to bring it up as a topic of discussion, and we also did have, um, you know, some, some other things that have come up over the, the past couple of weeks since we've been seeing winter weather between mailboxes being hit by plows. Obviously, that's part of our winter road maintenance policy. As soon as you put something within the town's right-of-way, you're at risk for potential damage, um, out of our control. So that's one of the things that the town does not accept responsibility for. So it was that, and then also just about the routine maintenance. Not sure. Are you planning on speaking publicly tonight?
Sure.
Sure, thanks, John.
Yeah.
Eric Dennis Russell, Nottingham. Thank you very much. You know, as you know, we had some inclement weather like a week or so ago. Uh, we had some, a lot of ice on the dirt roads. Our road is a little particular in the case that you have to go down Mindle Road, which is in Raymond. It's a private road in Raymond before you hit the Nottingham Town Line, and now those roads are town roads. And the town's always done maintenance on those roads, you know, from the, uh, the Raymond side all the way through the Nottingham side. Last week, uh, we had a, you know, some ice on the roads. Nottingham sanded just the Nottingham part and left the Raymond part, Mindle Road, unsanded. So to go out a nice sanded road, and then you hit glare ice to get out to the main road, you know, it just didn't make sense. It's the first time I've been out there for 40 years that the, you know, you stop sanding the Raymond side of that so you can get access to our property. Uh, so I emailed Ellen, and I said, what the hell's going on here? Uh, and, um, and she says it's important to clarify at this time, there's no formal agreement allowing the town of Nottingham to maintain the section of Mindle Road located in Raymond. While we recognize and respect the historical practice of Nottingham, we must adhere to legal boundaries. Evidently, there's some sort of legal boundaries there. And our top priority is ensure that emergency vehicles can maintain access. Well, let me tell you, if it's not sanded, then you can't maintain access. After I emailed Ellen, the town truck came down and threw just a little bit of sand on it, but it wasn't enough so that it didn't slide off the road. So it needs to be sanded the same as the Nottingham.
How many people slid off the road?
None this time, luckily.
A deal.
Yeah, so that was nice. Yeah, we all have four-wheel drive.
But you gotta realize, it's not gonna be a dirt road on a Raymond.
What's the distance of the road there? I've driven it a million times.
It's probably a half a mile.
Okay.
The, uh, the Raymond side is about a half a mile, the Nottingham side is about a half a mile to get all the way in. So it's about all and half the road. You know the fork that you hit on the way in?
After you go down the hill by the pond and the road splits, goes like this, your way or going the other way.
Yeah, right before.
Fork is there. So the log cabin's in Raymond, that sits up by the pond?
That log cabin, half of the property is in Raymond. The other, the backside of the property is in Nottingham.
What's the name of the road that goes off of?
Mindle.
Mindle.
Mindle Road.
Mindle.
Now, from what I understand, Nottingham has some agreements with.
Morse.
Morse for Morse Road with the town of Raymond, and it's a problem to get an agreement with the town of Raymond for a private road because it's a private room in Raymond, and they don't really care about it. So uh, what we would have, what you would have to do is get all of the landowners on that, on Mindle Road in Raymond to agree that it's okay for Nottingham to maintain this section of the road. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You are correct.
Alright. So, in fact, I believe Donna talked to you or emailed you and said, I would be willing to help on this particular endeavor. Uh, so my question to the board is, or my, and my comments is, we'd like to have that sanded the same way the Nottingham part is sanded, so that it's safe for everybody. And we'd like to have it maintained. There's, you know, it's a little bit bumpy right now, you know, the same as Nottingham, as it's been done for the past 40 years. And we'd like to get this process in place so that we can get that, an agreement with all of those town, all those landowners in place, so that there's no legal issue.
What's the, how many landowners are there?
Right now, I counted nine.
And then there's a new subdivision going in?
There's, there's three, uh.
On the Raymond side. Fowlzone has a four-to-five-house subdivision?
Yeah, Fowlzone started clearing some lots in there. He's got a foundation going in next week.
If that's only one landowner, I mean.
That's one, that's one landowner right now.
Right now.
But it's easy, if, if the house sells, it's easy to locate the next.
Does he have to do any road improvements for that subdivision?
He did actually, uh, do some drainage work on the side. Uh, he cut part of the road down and threw in some gravel so that if any, he had any water runoff from his properties, uh, it wouldn't affect the road.
You'd be surprised, it'll make him tired.
This is right.
It's a private road. So it's, it's up to the landowners. The, the, the road maintenance is technically the landowner's responsibility.
I understand that, but to get his building permits.
Yeah.
Well, he, I mean, he had contacted the town of Nottingham, and we're looking for us to acknowledge that we accept the road maintenance, and we couldn't do that because we legally can't. We can't accept the road maintenance in another town absent an agreement.
So what I'm looking for is not only the maintenance to continue as it has in the past, but for the town to, uh, hop on this and see if we can get some sort of agreement with the landowners and get this cleared up.
Well, well, if Fowlzone paved it, maybe we could accept it.
Well, we can't accept anything.
You can't accept anything. It's not ours.
It's not a matter of accepting it, John.
Accept the maintenance.
Right.
Who owns the road?
The property, the landowners on the Raymond side own that section of the road.
Yeah, you own.
Can Raymond do that owner?
It's a private road.
That's why it's got a red sign.
That's why it's got a red sign.
Which is spelled wrong.
Yeah. It's spelled correctly now.
They fixed it?
Yeah, they fixed it.
Is there an easement across the property?
Um, you as individual landowners on the Nottingham side might have it in your deed, but as far as the town of Nottingham, when it accepted that road as a Class 5, we've accepted the road only. So we don't.
Old.
Oh, it's very old. The original Nottingham, the original Tuckaway Shores subdivision was, it was subdivided, I believe, in the late 50s, early 60s.
It's been as early as the 40s.
So what's that?
First moved in. Could be as early as the 40s.
Yes.
If that road goes back to 1940, uh, it should be made public in Raymond.
That would be something to look up.
So a little clump there, I mean.
Poor case, the, uh.
The Raymond residents probably don't care much cuz Nottingham's been taking care of it for all the time, so they don't give a crap about what they, you know? Only time they're gonna care is if we don't do anything, but then that's gonna affect all our Nottingham residents.
Right.
Right.
So we're in the clundrum of how do we do it? Just like when the Beaver, Beaver Dam broke the road in half.
Also, there is, it's going to again. There's a beaver started making a dam inside the culvert. Now, Fowlzone had his guys out there this morning with an excavator trying to clear that culvert, and he couldn't get it done. So you might wanna have Steve head out there and take a look at it.
Oh, boy.
Yes, but it's a culvert hole.
The culvert is where?
It's right at the beginning of.
It's in Raymond.
Yeah, it's in Raymond, right at the beginning of the road.
We can't continue to take care of that.
Steve won't be over there.
Well, Steve put a grate up on one side of it, and you know, and he's always cleared that grate, uh, you know, as the water rushes through the grate through the road. Uh, but the beavers came in from the other side.
Right, but why isn't the town, I mean, the town of Raymond's not taking care of it, 'cause it's a private road. And you want, it, it's even farther outside of the, I get that it goes to Nottingham community, but it's not even in our town. So like, if our guy gets hurt on a town truck, doing, like, we dumped the excavator into the pond, like, we're, we are way outside.
Which is part of the reason why a lot of the service that has been performed in the past is no longer being performed because our current Highway Director knows that legally, we should not be doing anything. So this is why it's now a conflict.
How do we change that?
We changed that with the, the 20-plus families that live down.
Right.
Go to the town of Raymond.
Most of us are retired. But we were told when I bought.
Have you guys talked to the town of Raymond on that road at all?
Say that again?
Has the Board of Selectmen for Nottingham, or anybody in Nottingham, had a conversation with the board in Raymond?
No.
On this.
Not that I know of.
There is a history, originally, with a crisis of two years ago, and then this group did vote to fix it.
Right.
Right.
Not Raymond flat-out refused.
Right.
Okay, well.
And because we needed to have emergency access to the residents.
Right. And you still have that, uh, emergency access issue, so you might wanna take a look at that Beaver Dam starting in the culvert.
At some point, somebody's gonna step up, and it shouldn't be the town of Nottingham every time. Why don't we take over all the roads in Raymond?
Well, that's, that's not really the right way to look at it.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, at some point.
I mean, we should probably do some initial, uh, preliminary research to find out if we have any property, property rights to it, to be able to maintain it or use it in Raymond, but, um, it, it is something that we should get started, at least is to start the conversation about getting an agreement from
At least this coming, this coming winter, and then might have to work on something different. Just, I think to leave them in the lurch all of a sudden when they're used to having services is not the right way to do it.
So.
Well, we're hiring people down there, you know?
Yeah, so Steve did say that it is being plowed and sanded, but just not to the same quality of service that it is once you hit the Nottingham line. Um, you know, you're, you're getting a salt and pepper shaker approach with the, the sanding, opposed to.
When you have an icy, oh, you know, John, when your dirt road is frozen solid, you get a little bit of a mist or a little bit of ice on it, uh, it's like a skating rink, and you gotta throw some decent sand on it, or else it's.
There's many a days that I've driven on those roads, those ways, before they got sanded or done.
I know.
I haven't happened the snowbank to hold yourself on the side of the road, and they're done it.
Yep.
We've all done that.
So, you know, I mean, the sanding aspect, I think, is there, but it should be clarified what we can do, I mean.
So I did give you, um, in your packets this week, I did give you the, um, the agreement that we have with the town of Raymond for Morse Road. We could use that as a, a template to potentially send out to the property owners in Raymond, or develop something off of that, that we can get this process started.
And Ellen, if you wanna work with Donna, she'd be happy to help you with all of that stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, cuz Morse Road could, could be another problem like this in the future.
Morse Road, we do have an agreement.
Yeah, but just clarifying that that agreement's, yeah, if it can be the same as you put over there, cuz Morse Road could have 12 new houses put on it too.
But Morse is a public.
Right.
Public.
It's a town.
Right, but you still gotta go through Raymond to get there.
No, I know, but.
But we're able to enter a new agreement with the town of Raymond, and at any point, we can nullify that agreement, but, um.
But Raymond has never managed this part of Mindle Road.
No. Well, they had at one point, but did they?
I don't believe so. I've been there for 40 years, and Raymond's never done a damn thing there. It's always been Nottingham. I live on it, Steve.
So I deliver oil on it all the time.
So RSA 53A permits a municipality to contract with a private entity for, um, So RSA fifty-three A permits a municipality to contract with a private entity for, um, public works agreements, but it's only permitted if private entities are participating in the maintenance and implementation of the agreement in the same manner as a public entity would. So it, you know, it's, it's questionable as to whether or not we'll be able to reach this type of an agreement with the eight or nine or however many property owners there are, but we've gotta start somewhere.
If you make the agreement with Falzone, he could put it in the deeds, uh, before he sells the property.
Yeah, but what about the other properties?
The other properties, I don't think they're gonna have a clause with it because it, it needs access for them as well.
Yeah.
Are they all year-round homes?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
This is, by the way, an example of why you.
Oh, one guy, one guy is just a property owner. He owns, I don't know, eighty, ninety acres. He's from, uh, Gloucester. He just bought the property, which is, once you get to the fork, the, if you're heading towards the fork, the whole right side.
Doesn't that go up to the fireman across the swamp?
Yep, yep. He bought all that property. He cut a, he cut a driveway in there and he's got a big field out back for deer hunting and a deer stand.
Mendel Road shows on the nineteen thirty-nine map. Their house was built in the forties.
Yeah, the house we're in was built in the forties.
Should be a public road.
Well, it's always been a private road, but. We can, do you know what?
So can we count on you guys to, uh, to address this, please?
Right, but if you follow that avenue, that it should have been a public road, that makes it easier for us. But being a private road in the, using the RSA in a different town makes it significantly more difficult.
Right, so contact Raymond, say that, you know, for this, uh, it should have been a, it should be a public road and get together with those guys and discuss it and.
What makes it a public road because it's been added?
So there was this, uh, this was part of the Camp Rhodes lawsuit that, uh, certain, uh, particularly old, uh, roads, uh, the state Supreme Court said if, uh, they've been, um, public use for twenty years prior to nineteen sixty-eight, they're public roads. It's supposed to be recognized. And we have a bunch of them. We didn't recognize them.
Alright, so, hey.
I'll get working on it.
So, do we need to talk about Jampsa at all? There, it's probably only ten feet, but.
Do we need to what?
What about Jampsa Trail? I mean, there's, that's technically the very beginning and that's also.
Right.
I don't think it is.
It is.
Is it?
Yep.
I mean, at that point, well, their question has been, you know, do you disconnect, discontinue that, Lena, just use Saks?
Well, right, you just.
But you have to be able to move over at some point, which would require access across private land. That is, that is a conversation that should be addressed at the same time.
Since we're doing it.
That's Jampsa.
Alright, that's all I got for you. Thanks.
Yeah, it's questionable where it is.
Thank you. I noticed that the, the policy doesn't talk about like.
Which one are you?
Mud season.
Which one specifically are you on?
The winter one really doesn't, and, I mean, the other one kind of just generally speaks of maintenance. How, how it's gonna be cared for or in order of priority.
But all this is detailed.
Alright. Excuse us, gentlemen.
Guys. Everybody's got each other's emails, just forward it later on to them.
But, you know, like, so I think that's really what Eric's problem was last year where we had, you know, freezing thyme. Horrible, you know, it doesn't really, our policies don't actually talk about how to deal with.
How do you deal with mud?
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's the mud, but if you look at the gravel portion for A, B, and C.
So it's, yeah, I mean, so that, that road in particular is under category C, which is maintain safe passage at low speed, which is under twenty-five miles per hour. Um, change existing drainage patterns only when absolutely necessary or in conjunction with development, repair major washouts, remove down trees.
Where are you, where are you from?
The road maintenance policy.
It's on the website, Steve.
Thank you.
Under the highway department. Very slow driving conditions, conditions are acceptable for extended periods typically graded two times per year.
And there's no doubt, we've done a lot more than that this year, but we need to. Dirt roads can't handle two times a year.
Well, the main, the, the main focus this year was to work on the drainage issues so that the grading could be ideally done in the spring and then the fall. It was an improvement.
It was an improvement. Naturally, traffic dictates how many times you gotta grade a road. And you know, on that, you're right, traffic's gonna dictate on there, but you know, I don't think, I think even the policy twice in the way it is, it should be. People in town that have this thought that we're gonna go back to the way that it was, is we're not. We're not gonna have a grader that's gonna be on the road every single week just taking care of the lake roads. We were very fortunate with the old, uh, highway department manager that we had, director that we had, but that's not feasible nowadays to do what we used to do. So because it's not feasible to do the, what we used to do, people are gonna have to realize that we're gonna do the best policy that we can. And, you know, if.
All I can expect.
If you have to drive on your road and it gets a little bumpy for a little while, I mean, we are gonna address the problem. The town is not here to deliberately not try to address these problems. You know, when they hear the road is bad, they are gonna do their best at getting into it as the priority. But people just can't expect, 'cause it gets bumpy, that we're gonna be the next day to fix it. It's just, we don't have the resources, we don't have the things to do it, and it's not gonna happen. And if they can't deal with it, too bad.
Drive slower.
Drive slower, absolutely. But, you know, we are, there's, there's no maliciousness going on about road maintenance in this town. We're doing the best that we can and we're trying to disperse it as well as we can across the road for all the dirt roads that we have. I mean, look how, the list of dirt roads, there's a lot of them.
We got a lot of dirt roads.
So.
We just gotta do the best we can with the money we got.
Absolutely. And I think we are doing the best we can with the money. I don't think anything's being neglected for any sort of reason.
Done much better this year than we have in the past.
And I think it will get better.
I think having staffing helps.
That's gonna be huge. And we have more people that can run a grader. Three years ago, we didn't have anybody.
Just need it in service.
Or a grader that runs, right.
Well, at least we have operators. So when it does run, we have somebody to use it. So I don't know, which is, which is more, to have one that runs and nobody can operate it or have people that can operate it, even though it's not running.
Heard associate, 'cause we didn't have enough rain to keep them good.
Did you see anything within these policies that you wanna see updated or just keep it on there for a review or? As is?
There was.
I mean, I've read things in here which I thought, which, you know, again.
Couple of things that are out of date, like, um, you know, the private road references and stuff like that.
Wording.
Wording, you know, I mean, it's not horrible, but.
Do, and probably anything.
We should at least update it to the twenty twenty-two roads that were accepted, 'cause I think this only, this only goes up through twenty twenty-one.
Right, and the addition of that, um,
Right, the emergency.
The road, um, we, we've dealt with the individual several times. He's come in to get his prop. But there's like a new road in the middle.
Oh, Ellison?
Do we technically have?
Down off of Dolph Dam, that new road?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kevin Bassett.
Kevin Bassett.
Bassett. There's a road that kinda.
Channel.
Channel, that one.
Right, but that's a, right, that's just a new name.
Yeah.
Right, that's, so we got new names to deal with. Do we technically have emergency lanes anymore?
No.
So, the, that needs to be stricken.
Well, you can still have reference to it because at any point you could designate an emergency lane. If the need arose that you need to be able to provide access, but you have to go through the process in order to designate it.
Cedar Waters is probably. Right, Cedar Waters is my other piece that probably should be pulled out of here.
Yeah, we are not plowing Cedar Waters. Okay.
But it's an emergency lane. Right, well, not. They would not maintain it. It's a private road, but. It's a private road. It's a private, it's a driveway.
It's like a.
Technically.
No, but it's like a campground or a trailer park. Like, the town doesn't go in and plow at the trailer park or the campground is responsible for access. Like, that's their liability to ensure that we can protect everything, but I don't.
We don't even know what's in there.
Right.
Yes.
So we should be maintaining it.
It's posted.
It's posted not to go in, right?
So that was something that was.
With the new owner.
That was something that was done years ago as who knows why or when or who made the reason for it to be done, but that policy should be stopped.
Yep. So in all actuality.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that. It's not, it's not gonna come back and say, 'cause it was an emergency lane. It's not, it's just. It wasn't part of the thing or any of that, so as long as we're not updating it, I'm good.
Is it Birch Tree Lane? An emergency lane? We replaced, uh, we replaced a culvert there in October of twenty-two.
Where is Birch Tree?
Is that the one that the, um, the heavy truck went through?
North River Route is, spent fifty thousand dollars on a culvert there in October of twenty-two.
So that.
Where is it?
It's North River Lake East.
Yeah. So it's on north of Route Four, right off of Cooper Hill.
Sure.
Somewhere. Is that the culvert where the dam is that comes through the, the dam on North River Lakes there?
Yeah, there was a piece of heavy equipment that collapsed it.
That collapsed it and broke it and.
Correct.
Uh, that's something else.
Oh, thank you, Jonathan. Letting those guys off the hook.
Huh?
There you go. Speak freely. Thank you.
Well, again, I don't think we're getting out of here anytime in the next fifteen minutes, so it's.
I mean, we cover Mendel and Moores is listed in here.
Right, but those.
Well, because they, they're still in Nottingham.
Right.
There's just a portion of them that's in Raymond.
Right.
I'm just saying they're under other.
Yeah. The Jampsa Trail needs.
And I guarantee Mendel Road wasn't even adopted by the town of Raymond. It was said, "Hey, Nottingham's using it," so they just said, "Sure." They probably didn't have a name for the road. Well, the guy Mendel is the one who had the first original house down there. It's the reason why the road's there for that reason. Same thing.
And you would know them all.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, yeah, exactly.
I do.
You would do a little stuff to it. I used to.
Alright, so any changes to these that we see besides?
Updating some of the names.
Updating the names and anybody see any reason to change any of the policy objectives, the classifications or on either road maintenance or the winter inclement weather road maintenance policy?
I didn't notice this when I was reading it on my computer, but the last thing in part A or road maintenance policy, part A is just a random P.
Oh, yeah, it's like a little smiley face.
Yeah, yeah, I was wondering if it was a smiley face or something. It should just be a period, right?
Either that or maybe it was supposed to say policy. In conjunction with the board's winter and inclement weather road main, maintenance policy.
Yeah, period. Somebody forgot, I didn't remember seeing that when I was reading it online.
Alright, so I will update that draft for your next meeting in January.
Yeah, I'd say we got more important things to discuss.
Yeah, definitely.
At this point. So we did the meeting schedule, road maintenance.
You did have an assessing item you skipped over. That was the, um, equalization ratio. It's not listed because it's not specific. Um, in your signature file, it's the, um, equalization. The pink sheet, what they refer to it as.
This is the one that we were talking about. About the values. We're having a motion or anything, I'll just sign it.
Correct. So the, um, I think it was sixty point seven was the, the median ratio for property values right now.
That's the sales-based one.
What this is where we're signing is we had an independent assessor go around, look, just state, wherever, look around at the houses that were sold and to where we, we were assessing it. And they found the margin that were in the sixty percent range.
Sixty point seven.
Sixty point seven, um, for where the house value is to where it's selling, which is not.
It's pretty good, actually.
No.
No.
No, not good at all.
No, it's terrible.
We're supposed to be within ten percent of a hundred.
Plus or minus. Right.
Right. So, this just shows in this study here that just came by that. When Avatar goes around this upcoming year to do our five years, that house values might increase. Oh, yeah.
But it gives you, what came to my house, Peggy's house, is this guy came in independently from, to measure Avatar, but he actually measured the outside of the house.
Right.
Oh, so it's.
That was probably the, the other ratio. The sixty-eight-ish, sixty-eight-ish one.
So we're done with that right there. We signed that. Uh, do you guys, I mean, there's only two items left. Do we wanna go right to the budget or you wanna go to the, uh, ARPA funds? Talk about those. Anybody have a preference? 'Cause we have to tell you tonight what we wanna do with those ARPA funds. Total for those ARPA funds?
We have, right now, short of the list commitments, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars to start with.
Sixty-two what?
Sixty-two, four ninety-eight.
Thank you.
Left.
Correct.
And you have to spend it by.
We have to have it committed by the end of this year. It has to be expended in twenty twenty-six. So would you like to start there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Tim, there you go. Absolutely.
Keep moving on. Alright, um, I had brought to your attention at the last meeting that we have several workstations in the town server that need to be replaced. Requested consideration for the replacement of those in bulk rather than trying to piecemeal it in the individual budget, department budgets. Uh, we came up with eight workstations, the server, the network switch and the firewall quoted by Backpay Networks, which is our current IT provider, for a grand total of sixteen thousand, six hundred, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. With said funds to come from remaining ARPA balance of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight. If you are amenable to that, I would request a motion to proceed with committing that amount of sixteen thousand, six twenty-seven, ninety-four to replace those various workstations.
And that's to pull it out of next year's budget.
Right.
Yep. Can I make a motion to proceed with the replacement of the eight workstations and server? And taking the funds of sixteen thousand, six hundred, twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents from the ARPA balance to be used. Sorry, what? I'll second.
I was looking for something for something else, but, uh, we have a motion in a second on using the, uh, the funds of sixteen thousand for the new computers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
So in that, that results in the sixty-two. After that.
The full wheel.
Or no?
No.
It's before that.
No, that's before it. So now we're at, running total, we're at forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, we had also talked at the last meeting about paving the walkway that goes from the rear community center gym over to, um, the playground. Uh, Courtney had received a quote that she had presented to the CIP committee for sixty-two hundred dollars. That was provided by Manchester Paving. Of course, we have to take care of the gutters on the side of. take care of the gutters on the side of the building and do some site work, which would be provided by the highway department in preparation for this. Uh, but we would be looking for a motion to commit the sixty-two hundred dollars for that project from the ARPA funds.
I guess, that was gonna stop before the pad down there, like when I'm. I know at some point we're talking about resaving the pad.
Yes. Yep, so this would just take care of the walkway. It was a four hundred, no, four hundred, no, two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred by.
Yeah.
Four, I think.
Yeah, I believe so.
All right.
Sixty-two thousand, sixty-two.
Sixty-two hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to, um, put aside six thousand two hundred dollars from the ARPA funds to pave the walkway behind the community center.
The benefit for paving this, just so people at home know why, we're gonna spend sixty-two hundred bucks.
We put in a new playground. Technically, we have to have it ADA accessible, so any future expansion of the playground needs to be.
It's not safe either.
Again, I'm just, we're saying this just so people know if they're listening at home, why we're we're not just paving something that blows sixty-two hundred bucks. There's a reason behind the expenditure. That's all I'm just trying to be clear about. We got a motion in a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that leaves a balance of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Um, we had talked about the conference room renovations, excuse me, transferring this to the space here to recreation space, which will be covered under um, the rec revolving funds, um, doing the renovations needed in the old community room. We had talked about about thirty thousand dollars from ARPA funds toward those conference room renovations. Alan threw together some figures, um, I'll go over them. HVAC five thousand dollars, us to put in a mini split, which will provide both heat and air conditioning in there because it would be much more costly to try to tie into our existing system um, and the parts availability, just because it's an older system are not there. Um, so five thousand dollars would put in a mini split to serve that room. Um, he's estimating fifty-seven hundred dollars for drywall repair, which includes putting new drywall over the existing drywall that's over plaster that is still remaining and then, of course, covering over the, um, the open framing that, on that exterior wall. Um, there's some electrical, first phase was eighteen hundred, second was twenty-five hundred. A portion of this does extend into the rear of um, the building that they're demoing, so I need to get that cleaned up. Um, he estimated painting for that room at five thousand, which is part of the uh, painting proposal that you awarded to Certapro Painters. They're doing that in phases, so I think it's there. Flooring is estimated at seven thousand. That's for carpet squares. Uh, we don't have the proposal yet, but we should have one this week. The wall build out for the mini split he's estimating is gonna be six hundred dollars. Ceiling tiles are just general maintenance, insulation, two thousand. And then framing and concrete work that had been done and needs to be done in that room, he's estimating at fourteen thousand. So this all total comes up to forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, which is a lot more than we were estimating. So we're gonna have to scale that back quite a bit. Um, because what I would be looking for you to commit is thirty thousand dollars with some formal estimates that I should have.
Who'd have the money to upgrade all our computer?
That's separate, that's, that's cable franchise funds. That's another discussion.
So he's drywelling over drywall?
So in that room, yes, in the existing room, there's, there's like plaster and then there's then drywall over that and then there's an old exterior wall on the hallway side, so it's just a matter of bringing everything up to the same.
Wow.
Exactly.
I guess I don't know what that's fourteen thousand dollars in framing is.
It's, it's ten thousand dollars for the condenser and the two units. There'll actually be one on the food pantry side, but this is just focusing on that one room.
It's five, how much for painting?
Five is what he's estimated.
I just painted my garage, which is huge, three stall, twelve foot ceilings. That number is outrageous.
This number is, well, yes, because it was nineteen thousand dollars to do all the projects within this building through Certapro.
Does, okay, so that nineteen, isn't that part of that room?
It is, so that's why I'm saying some of the, some of these preliminary.
Take the five grand off.
Right.
Well, that's not how you presented it when you read down the list. That's why.
I'm saying this was an estimate that Alan had presented me to finish that space, so that's why I'm only asking.
I know, but again, when you're listing out and you come up to a number of forty grand, you're saying, wait a second.
That's why I'm only asking you for to commit thirty thousand, because I think that is sufficient to do what is needed for that office renovation.
So back to the HVAC, so it's five thousand dollars for that one unit?
Correct.
For one mini split.
Yeah.
So there's a, um.
That sounds probably right.
Because you probably put a hot dog heater.
So it's one condenser, two heads. It's one condenser with two heads. So we're splitting the cost and then the other half of it would be the food pantry side, which would come under the building maintenance. So I would be looking for a motion for you to commit thirty thousand dollars to complete that project and I will have firm proposals for the flooring. The.
Is that the cheapest flooring we can put in there?
How much was the flooring in there?
The flooring's estimated at seven thousand dollars.
How much was?
We're putting carpet tiles over the existing concrete floor. I don't have an estimate, I, I don't have a proposal yet. I will have one this week. So.
It'd be that much.
There's, this is just an estimate that Alan threw in there.
Which is why she's saying the thirty thousand dollars should be moved in to fishing.
Yeah, we've already cut five thousand off from it because we've already paid that.
Right.
And the electrical's part of the HVAC, which is already paid for. And if the building maintenance for the HVAC of five wire.
For the, the side, for the food pantry, we're addressing the food pantry as well.
But I'm just saying, why wouldn't the full?
Full HVAC thing.
We, we can.
Out of the building.
We can do, we can certainly do that to meet the price point, of course.
But then we're taking money out of that where this money has to be spent.
Has to be.
Committed.
Right.
This year.
Can we commit the whole HVAC thing, both sides?
Yes.
As part of this?
You can, you can do that.
So if.
I mean, we only have thirty.
So thirty-nine, six seventy before we talk about the thirty thousand that I'm proposing. And I, and I will put this caveat out there. I did talk to Jen Phillips. They have come up with a solution using the IBC and, um, she's consulted with both Dale and Chief Curry on their emergency exit scenarios and they will not be needing ARPA funds to pave their walkway.
Good.
For an ADA.
I mean, I was just kind of thinking maybe we could put material aside because I think they're gonna still need to do some stuff over there. Just they don't know what they need to do.
Right.
We need to appropriate the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I mean, we got two years to spend it, so I'm just thinking if we could appropriate material, money for materials, that might be a good use of some of that money.
So of thirty-nine, six seventy, I'm asking for thirty, so you can
Okay.
Ask for, I mean, if you want to increase that, that would leave you nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, of which I don't have any further requests to appropriate those funds. We might have to move some stuff around as we get into the budget discussions.
Right, but I think it would make sense to add the other piece of the mini split and do all of that as one project.
Under the ARPA.
But you can do that. We just need to appropriate that money.
Right.
And then we can take the rest out of the building fund. Finish whatever we need to.
And what's left for the money is, is the building fund gonna take care of the rest of this room too?
It's coming out of rec revolving.
Maybe it should come out of ARPA.
Which part? This room? The office renovations for the rec department?
Uh, they're trying to finish up that room down there and then once that's finished.
We'd like to see everything in operation next year.
We move and then they.
No, 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 but sometime next year.
Sometime next year.
Yeah, in the first selectmen's meetings.
First quarter. Hopefully.
Yeah.
Before John retires.
So I make a motion to, uh, commit thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funds towards the new conference room renovations.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And what do we do with the nine grand?
I think we're gonna talk about it when we get into the budget.
We're gonna keep that for rainy day fund for the moment.
So we would like to, when we're putting together that conference room thing.
Yes.
With that one HVAC unit, that if we can really shave that in, because there seems to be a lot of extra fat on that. It seems like the entire HVAC should be able to be part of that renovation cost, everything. The painting's off from there. The flooring should be able to come in for half that price compared to what we've seen there, that that thirty thousand should be able to easily handle the HVAC and everything.
Yeah. I.
Yeah, yeah, the seven thousand dollars on flooring, I have no idea that, that's a, that's like twelve dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
Gold plated, so. Carpet tiles are like a dollar a square.
They're carpet squares. We are, we are gonna get like an attic stock, so if we have to replace one, if there's a spill or whatever, but again, you know, it's not going to be.
It's a conference room. It's not like it's.
Okay. Continue.
Okay, um, so, God bless you, um. In terms of the cable franchise fund, uh, two thousand eleven, Warren Article eleven established a cable franchise fund, which is a revolving fund for the purpose of upgrading and maintaining the town's cable TV and cable-related IT systems. This fund is to be used for ca, to finance cable system projects such as public access channel, capital support equipment, computer hardware, software and other directly related projects approved by you, the board of selectmen. Uh, the fund was later capped at thirty thousand in two thousand fifteen, which is the current balance. When, um, any funds are taken from this, it replenishes in the next annual cable franchise fee collection, so we get approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars a year in cable franchise fees. Any excess goes into the general fund as an offsetting revenue. Um, so we have had four various vendors look at our space, our current equipment. Obviously, we've had some, um, technology challenges that are just becoming more common occurrences, more prevalent. Uh, we're also at the point where some of the equipment is outdated to the point where we can't get replacement and finding um, technical support to help us is, is limited, so. Um, Doug Cummings, I think I had mentioned in the past, Doug Cummings, um, coming from an audio/video background, he has been extremely helpful in this process. So of the four vendors, we were able to get quotes from three. Um, it would be a two-phase project. The first phase would be obviously taking care of the audio/video, video needs in that new space. So we're talking about the microphones, the camera system, um, putting up a display, um, smart TV, not a smart board, but a smart TV that we can um, use in place of a projector. Um, obviously tech upgrades and, and work towards phase two, which would be updating the recording and the, um, the Comcast system, so. The three vendors provided quotes ranging from twenty-nine to thirty-nine thousand dollars for the first phase. Uh, we've been through them. We've tried to do apples-to-apples comparison. Each one has their own idea of how they would like to see the room set up. Um, Doug and I have tried to work through and figure out, you know, what we can do budget-minded in this sense, but still have equipment that's going to be able to serve the town's needs for hopefully as long as this current system has. Um, so with that being said, I would be looking for you to move forward with Events United. That's one of the vendors. Um, they were the, um, second, they, they were the middle quote, but it was only within a few hundred dollars once you go through and um, remove some extras that they had calculated in there. So I would be looking for a motion to proceed with contracting with Events United for the purchase and installation of new audiovisual equipment for the new conference room for a sum of up to twenty-nine thousand dollars with said funds to be withdrawn from the cable franchise fund. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Second phase would enact when? Next year?
Potentially. We'd have to wait for that fund to replenish again, which it could replenish in twenty-twenty-five, um, and it would be ideal to do that. We need to get Comcast in here to do some fiber upgrades. Um, we'd obviously have to run from, we're run from the utility or the storage room now into this room, so we're talking about doing a temporary feed over into the new space, but then all of that broadcast that gives us live, live feed to channel twenty-two plus the, um, the video recording, all of that equipment would have to be updated, so we're probably looking at another significant chunk of change. It just was not something that we could add into this phase, so I, I, you know, just throwing a rough estimate out there is probably gonna be another fifteen to twenty thousand.
And there was one in there from Key Code.
Yes, Key Code Media. Um, so there, there.
It was like barebone.
Yes.
Was it missing something or? I don't know, it just didn't seem, I mean, basically they were providing mics. Like I thought it was part of one of the other proposals, but it's.
Key Code Media is, um, so it was, there was a larger proposal in there. There, so there was a summary sheet that was just talking about three different options for the microphones, so that was just adding into their, their proposal. They had originally proposed a microphone system that wasn't gonna be available to us until February. So we told them that they needed to go back to the board and give us something that could work potentially now.
Okay.
And then, of course, the, the third one, which was, was great, that was way out of our price range at thirty-nine thousand.
And when, when would they get started on this?
Um, I would like to say that we should be able to do this towards the earlier part of the year. It's just a matter of getting the commitment, getting the equipment ordered and then they would when the space is, is ready for them, um, going back to that space, it's supposed to be, they're gonna do spray foam insulation this Friday to do that exterior wall and, um, where the, the two, the two rear access doors are. And then it needs to be sheet rocked, painted, then the floor. And we'll be good for them to go, so I'm hoping, you know, within the first week or two of January.
Have we roughly talked? So that they're not, we don't have to go backwards and be like, oh, now we need an access panel here for junction box for microphones, like it's.
We, yeah, so what we did was we did, um, an electrical schematic or, you know, we've run the conduits and everything. And we've given them, this is, this is what you have to work with for a pallet, so how can you make this work in your configuration?
Make a motion to proceed with contracting with Events United for the purchase and installation of new audiovisual equipment for the new conference room for a sum of twenty-nine thousand dollars with said funds withdrawn from the cable franchise fund.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Five, nothing.
Do the one above.
Yep, um, Parks and Rec, they have an annual conference that they attend. Um, typically, we have to prepay for the conference that's held in January, but they've changed their billing software or whatever and they cannot accept prepayments for it, but I mean, technically, that's the routine that they've gotten into is paying it in December for the conferences held in January, so with that being said, we don't want that money to roll over. Um, she is looking for you to make a motion to encumber that five hundred dollars from their twenty-twenty-four recreation dues and conference line item for their annual Parks and Recreation Conference in January.
Oh, okay, not, not on a regular.
So what we'd be, yeah, so we'd be committing twenty-twenty-four funds.
Right, which they would normally do anyway, but.
Right, because usually they pay for it.
Oh, we pay for it now usually.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, make a motion to encumber five hundred dollars from.
I just wanna ask, so if it's, is it, is it in the budget for next year?
For the twenty-twenty-six conference.
But if she can't register till January anyway.
We're gonna have to do it every year, sorry.
I mean, technically, what we can do is we can cut the check and just not mail it out until January.
Right, because it's part of the budget for next year anyway.
Right, but that would be for.
Twenty-twenty-five.
The twenty-twenty-six.
But if it's in the budget for next year.
We would be encumbering every year or we just.
I guess.
I bet she's gonna catch up to a lot.
Right, so if that's, yeah, I mean, I guess.
Can she find five hundred dollars worth of stuff for the sheer line item?
I'm fine doing it, but it's, like I said.
Fix an hour, send a letter, keep.
I thought this was just a one-year thing.
But it would end up being, uh.
Next year, the same.
Do you think it's just a, a fluke billing thing or is this now how they do it?
It's now how they do it.
Okay, so, yeah, then we might.
So now when she puts it in her budget, what's showing for her budget for 2025 will pay for her 2025.
Right.
That's what, yeah. We'll just budget for it in the future and then just count it as a wash for this year instead of encumber it, because then it's just going to be.
Right.
Right.
Rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Right, no need to encumber if it, yeah.
I'm sure that there's something else we can find this year to line item it and spend $500 this year.
Or like I said, we can just cut the check and hold it until January.
But then we're still just getting into the weird, then there'll be 500 extra dollars next year if that doesn't have a home. Which if we think we need to do to keep the OX director salary on here, $500 for the just, for simplicity's sake. If that's just how the billing goes, is how we do it from now on, it seems to make sense. Because if we cut the check, you're going to say it's out of here, but we're not going to see it hit and then it's just going to be.
Right, and that just makes a mess.
Yep.
Where did this come from?
So you started with motion, what would you like to do?
Uh, I've, Tim has made me rethink my motion.
What's wrong with your motion?
I never actually said anything.
Okay.
Okay, so scratch that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Move on.
No, that was a good point, Tim. For some reason, I was reading it as a one-term, one-time thing.
All right, so then.
No.
All right, so the next one is the police department has specked out, um, a new Polaris UTV to replace their 20-year-old ATV that they have. Um, this was something that was going to be presented to the CIP for potential replacement in the near future. They have worked with Plastow Powersports. Obviously, it's a very specific unit. It's not the, um, it's, it's specked out to the way that they would like it. There obviously comes a police package, but it comes with a much heftier price tag. Um, so they've specked it out with what they need. It comes in at $15,598. And then due to position vacancies in her department, she would like to utilize some of the unspent funds remaining in her department budget towards this purchase. And I've provided you with the purchase agreement with, with the specifications on it, but she would like consideration for this purchase of $15,598 from her budget, which as of 12/9/24, she had still another payroll to get in here, but, um, there was a hundred and $50,000 remaining in her budget as a result of vacant positions.
Still showing 151,000 overage.
Yeah, but we know that there's overages in other departments that that might have come back to, so it's not like this.
We did review that in a department head meeting last week. So the fire department and the police department budgets are in good shape. Although the highway department is extremely close and will probably go over. But ultimately between those two departments, I believe that this, the operating budget can support this and not be near going over. We don't have a lot left on the bottom line, but the existing budget can support this.
Are these really up to date too, you know?
This was after the last payroll and accounts payable batch. So we have one more payroll run and, and whatever residual invoices come in for the last two weeks of the year.
Should roughly know what's out there, right?
The only, the big invoice that she was waiting on was from Ospey Mountain Electronics for outfitting the new cruiser. Um, and that was in, I think it was 19,000, just 19 or 20,000 dollars.
And there are others.
What?
To outfit the new cruiser.
We haven't paid the initial, not for the repair.
Right. Right.
This was for the equipment that we're now replacing through the insurance claim.
How much was the deductible on that?
$1,000.
But we can save $500.
But we have a, we, we have a line item within the budget to cover deductibles for incidences.
Does she have any trailer to move this?
Yes, they're modifying the existing trailer right now.
And then she has room in the?
In the trailer, I, I mean in the shed, yes.
Shed for this?
Mm-hmm.
And they're going to sell the old one?
Um, it doesn't have much value because of its age and it came with a trade value of $500. It will either be traded or salvaged.
I just watched them run up and down the road the other day with it.
They do keep it maintained.
Doesn't seem like it's that bad.
We can give them.
It's, it's not bad, it's just a matter of, you know, a side-by-side would be able to suit their needs better. An ATV 20 years ago worked well for the department.
It's mostly for search and rescue on the park and.
ATV can get in tighter places than a UTV.
I mean, I would see not getting rid of it until it became a maintenance problem, like if it's.
And you can do that, it owes it now, there's, it's definitely exceeded its useful life.
I mean, we, we own it, just keeping it now, is she going to outfit it with lights? Is that going to be another charge coming out of the?
Um, Ospey Mountain Elec- it's actually cheaper to have Ospey Mountain Electronics do it.
Outfit the UTV.
With the lights package.
But that's not part of the $15,598.
She said the new unit includes.
It has a spec out based on the needs of the park. That, that is coming from the.
Coming from the dealership.
Okay.
Like it has a windshield and a roof and a winch.
Right.
Does it have doors?
How about golf carts? Or golf carts? Membership to, um, Nepo Country Club.
So I think the big thing like looking forward, right, is the, the 24 budget is coming to an end. We have a little bit of overages in the past, we've usually let them go back maybe to the general fund. We have the other budgets to, to either look forward to. This is like taking a potential CIP item off or anything like that, that provides for potential. Equipment of the department?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the purchase of the new Polaris UTV from Plastow Powersports, the amount of $15,598 to replace the police department's 20-year-old ATV.
Sure you want to say replace?
Well, it is going to technically replace it.
Didn't say we're going to.
Right, the, the one nice thing about the ATVs, you technically, once the pickup truck comes back. You can put the ATV into the bed of the pickup truck while towing the trailer with a UTV for X larger events that are at.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sure we can support this.
There's going to be like $250,000 left that it's like we should, you know, maybe putting towards the grader or something like that, or taking it out or things that we kind of need. That are going to be fighting for later on too.
No, I know, it's like, let's.
You know, is.
How will you fund the new evaluation?
I have a quite, you know, again, I, I hesitated to have a discussion on this here as the 15th. I know that we have the money right now, right? And we can spend it. But I, you know, I'd like more of a sales pitch, I think, on the reason of why we need to spend the 15, why we need this so bad. Like tell me that we've been to the state park 20 times last year with our current ATV and that we used it up there and we, we did, you know, 300 miles on it and that the ATV was used also for a power line rescue that we needed to go to, they needed to get it out there. Give me a reason. Years ago, and this is why I think about this, years ago, the fire department came in front of us and they said, not this, I wasn't on the, this board, but there, and they said, we need this fire boat. We need this boat, yeah, all right? And again, an aluminum boat with gear and stuff on there, and again, I'm not talking, the motor was a 40 horse, so it had to be towed everywhere it went. It wasn't something that could make it up to Round Pond or any of the ponds out back for water rescues. There's no public access to get on North River Lake, there's no public access to get on Nottingham Lake. So it wasn't useful and we spent all this money on it. And the only time they use it now is three times a year for training. And I think we may have used it once, and I'd love to see the data on how much money we spent on that boat that we don't use. So my question is if the police department wants this and wants to spend 16,000, I want a reason for them to spend it besides a want.
That's great.
And I'm, I'm trying to be blatantly clear is where I don't mind spending the money on it, but make me feel good and make the people feel good of why we need it and not just say it's a want and not just to say it's because we have the money to spend. And again, you can sell me on those ideas, I'm perfectly good on it. But I want to know the data proving, saying that why we need it. We know why we need new vehicles and we put those in the, the budget, we know, you know, why, but and again, I'm just, I'm not opposed to it. Straight right there. I just want, you know, have Alvarez come in and sit in front of us and say, hey, just so you know, this is the data I collected, because you put the data on what they wanted, they did the research there, just.
Sure.
Because you can, I mean, again, not trying to be negative on it, but it's something where.
No, you're not being negative at all.
So just, I mean.
Because right now I'm going to say no.
So in here though, she said the purchase would eliminate the need for a future request replacement in the CIP.
Right, but that doesn't say.
That doesn't mean they're going to get it in the future.
Right, and that doesn't say what they need it for.
I guess in one of those things is I don't know, it's one of those things like the rescue boat, the boat was probably used twice this year, I think, for actual fires out on Tuckaway.
But the time that they got there, the fire was put out by the residents of the lake anyway, so it wasn't, because it took too long. It wasn't like one, they could just take a little 12-foot lunar boat, shove it in the back, put a little five horse on it and zip over the island. They got to get there, they got to haul it, they got to back it in, they got to, I mean, it's, I've watched them launch for their training. It is not a, a zippity, here you go procedure. It was a, the, we were forced upon that by, like I say, by who, but whatever, about pressuring to how much they needed that. But at least they came in and gave us a sales pitch on it.
Okay.
And again, we shouldn't have bought it, but that, we have it now, so whatever, it's going to be there for 20 more years.
Where did they launch?
They launched it off Cove Road, when they go to Tuckaway, or they can launch it at the state park, or they can launch it at Fundy.
Yeah, they got a few places they can launch from.
But if, I mean, getting into Fundy on a, getting into Fundy on a Saturday afternoon, good luck, they're never going to get it in there anyways if they need it.
Nope.
Because there's no space. So again, it's almost, but that's a whole nother subject. But this is where I'm coming with for the 15. Why I want to know the reasons before I say yes to the money. So.
So you want to have another meeting before the end of the year and propose why they want it?
I mean, sorry if it inconveniences people, but it's still 15,000 bucks.
Yeah, no, I ain't got a problem.
We probably can still have another meeting, because I'm sure there's some other things that are here as we get into the waking hours that are going to be needed to tidy it up.
I don't have a problem at all, meeting again. As long as you guys don't.
I, I'm, I'm around, so.
I'm unemployed now.
Perfect, so we got two, we just need one more, then we have a quorum.
I can make next Monday.
So probably by the 30th, right, that'll be the, the last Monday then.
Next, next Monday would probably be the better idea, that way we're not waiting till the last minute.
Yeah, sure.
I cannot make a meeting next Monday, but if you've got a quorum.
It's going to be quick, I hope.
Well, I mean, if, if overall, like we would, if we look at the, and we're, we're off track a little bit, but like, talked about like, oh, we don't have enough for a grader, but if there was enough overages from all the departments this year, plus the money we had, and you're like, we can buy a grader. Like, I mean, there are things that are definitely needed in town that if we need to.
A grader is way upon on the list of.
We can understand the justification of that.
Right, so if you want to see how the rest of this pans out, we can, I'm fine either way.
Yet again, that's, I'm just, you know, because again, not that I hate, I, I mean, I don't like the thing of doing it, but when our general fund gets so much, there is the fact that in times past, we bought down our, our tax rate. You know, and I find that the fact that if we, I hated that procedure to do it, but I understand, you know, we have to give the money back to the taxpayers, it's their money. You know, rather keep a nice tight budget where there is not a lot of excess money going into that fund, just enough we need for emergency purposes. You know, that's the reason for the fund, it's more for emergency purposes, to load it, load it, so, but I digress, I'm sorry.
So withdraw the motion?
Yeah.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so it's up to, and we can go for a vote right now, whoever's going to vote no, so.
We can withdraw the motion, Tim.
Yeah, I can withdraw the motion if you guys want to, if the chief's available to meet or.
Yeah, or Alvarez, or, I mean, seems like he's done, Officer Alvarez done a lot of the legwork on this, then we don't need to meet the chief, I mean, she wants to come in, sure, but doesn't.
Motion to withdraw. When you heard from all the department heads, was there anything hanging out there for like other, any large expenditures, any gaps, anything?
Um, there was.
Besides this one thing that was obviously brought forward?
Uh, Matt has ordered two, four sets of PFA free gear. So that'll be incoming. The highway department, of course, is the unpredictable, not knowing what the weather was going to be as far as the subcontracted winter plowing, so that's going to be the biggest thing. Um, the repair, I'm, I'm trying to get him to pull together the, um, the repair for the six-wheeler and then the grader as well, so hopefully we'll have that before year end.
Yeah.
You still got an invoice out for the rental?
Yes.
We're not really grading right now.
No.
No, but I'm just saying, that's not a bill.
The rental was $60 an hour.
It's coming in.
When it ran.
The grader that's sitting behind the highway department now.
Is a loaner, that's the loaner that we're renting at like $60 an hour, but we're only getting charged for actual times, one, yes.
Okay. I don't want people to drive by and see that and be like, hey, look, where'd that come from?
Yeah, it's not our grader.
Um, yeah, so there was a couple of Strangler and nothing real significant coming through.
Do you need, um, you had the two invoices from Lenzlock and Custom Singles in here?
Those are all.
That's all right.
Yeah, they got attached to my report, because I copy and paste, so ignore those.
So do you have anything encumbrances besides the one thing we're not doing?
I don't, as of right now, no. We're, as long as all of the invoices that we're waiting on come in by like the second week of January, that's usually our cutoff for processing out of the 24 budget. But if, if it seems like there is going to be something coming in that's not going to make it and it's going to be beyond that point, then we'll have to address it next year because you have to vote to encumber before the close of the year.
So if it's like the engine replacement on the truck, if it's, looks like it's going to take long. Because now you said there's one payroll left on here that we haven't.
Correct, so we process payroll this Friday that goes out Tuesday and that will be the last payroll of the year.
So all the Christmas holiday and everything else is on next year's. So right now there is 586,754. So right now there is five hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four.
And payroll runs about eighty thousand for our bi-weekly period.
So there's roughly five hundred thousand left in this year's budget that does minus the few little things we've mentioned.
Uh huh, correct.
So what do you think about, we didn't give out any raises this year, but could we give out a holiday site then? Food for thought.
See, five hundred thousand, the rest of the equipment thing seems like a grader. It seems like stop fixing the grader. It's like, what?
No, because he wants to fix the grader because if we, I mean, if we had the potential to run two until that one died, that would be even better. We have, we're plentiful in grader operators right now.
And roads to grade.
And roads to grade.
All right, they could grade tomorrow.
Does he have one in mind?
He does, the one that he specked out for the, um, the CIP. He specked it out exactly the way that he would want it. You haven't seen it, four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
It's not even touching the truck reserve at all.
So Komatsu. Yeah, so we have two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in the equipment reserve right now.
And you, but Curry just bought a bunch of suits.
Yes.
In the neighborhood of, and those are the.
Thirty-five hundred a piece. So four sets, so fourteen thousand.
What'd you say?
They're thirty-five hundred dollars a piece, so fourteen thousand will be incoming for those.
Then those happen because if, once the suits now are going out of.
Yes.
Code or whatever.
Correct, yeah, I, he was saying, I think it's by June of next year, there will be, and so he has nineteen suits that I believe he has to replace eventually.
It's a half a million dollars here, like if we have to spend for suits, like I'm just saying, like we're sitting here waiting for a little bit of salary that we're.
Grader.
A grader, we're talking about a budget that is completely capped at four percent if we even get close to being staffed. We need like real things to purchase.
A grader would be.
On Monday. And we need a list. And this four hundred and eighty-four thousand should be really close to like fifty thousand dollars of overage left. Like, I mean, if we have suits that are supposed to be changed by mandate to meet the new standard, let's not replace four sets, let's replace twelve sets.
Well, you just said he was replacing how many?
Four.
Four.
For fourteen thousand. We have four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Like, I'm just saying, there's a.
Yep.
Ton of money here that if we can get our firefighters the correct gear they need that takes out of next year's budget, so if we actually get staffed up and we have.
That would be good. Is there a ton? What's the actual figure?
It's close to half a million dollars.
Is it?
Yeah.
Really?
If you look at that, that she sent out. This number right here was five eighty-six. She said salaries is roughly eighty thousand, that's roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Then you take off maybe a little bit for the cruiser, nineteen thousand for the electronics, maybe fourteen grand for this, like, okay, we're whittling it down, but there's still four hundred thousand dollars worth of overages potentially for departments that are hurting.
And the only reason why.
Is because we're not staffed.
Understaffed.
Understaffed, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, one thing too, being understaffed, again, doesn't matter, but to make sure we finish our budgets, to make sure that we have, we are still paying everybody. And the reason why we don't stay understaffed is because we're underpaid.
Correct.
You know, so the guys that are working at the fire department, if we can't find new recruits there because the fact that we're not paying enough, that's an issue. So.
Well, we can't, can't put in raises at this point because we don't, you know, it's just, we don't have a supporting budget for that if we are staffed.
No, I understand, we're, we're just talking about money that we have on hand for this year, but for people to know that this is the reason why this, we only have this money is because the fact that we can't, we can't support the staff. And we can't find people to work. And you know, there's reasons why we can't find people to work. And I think a major reason is because of income.
Correct. Do we, let's just hypothetically saying, like, we did want to use the truck capital reserve. That doesn't need to go before.
No, your agents to expend.
Agent, okay. So I mean, like, we've talked, we've heard so much about the grader, that seems like something realistically next week, once the budgets have hit, once everything is like, the dust is settling. I don't know why we wouldn't do that for something.
So what do we do, encumber?
I think we just tell Steve to hit click now, buy now. And then he spent.
And Amazon delivers it?
We, we spent two hundred thousand out of this budget and two hundred and eighty out of the truck fund to help cover something that's going to come off the CIP in three years. And there's still a bunch of money in here to do another fifteen suits. Like, I just want to make sure that.
We have two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in the fund, two hundred and eighty-two, one eighty-six fifty as of quarter three.
And then if we have a grader that goes down because it can't go in reverse, then the other one's still running and we're not hearing, hey, you haven't graded our roads all year long, we're still grading, and then next year we've graded two, maybe three times because of whatever we're lucky.
Because that's in the twenty-twenty-six.
I'm thinking about that, grading the road three times, woo.
Grading dirt roads will make a lot of people happy and we'll find that.
We'd make a lot of people happy.
That fund will make a lot of people, I think, happy. Knowing that the roads, we have a grader that works and the fact that it gets graded.
And that we have.
If we buy a grader, it doesn't get used and that's.
I think this is the big thing, is you get operators, you have operators to use it.
The grader that he has specked out is four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred, and that is subject to a price increase on December seventeenth tomorrow.
Well, that's unfortunate.
Well, well, not if we buy now. Tomorrow is.
Trust me.
I mean, even.
They want to sell a grader. That price will stay the same.
Yeah, well. I mean, that seems like something that we would hypothetically do, and we still have a ton of room in the budget if something else happens in the next two weeks. And they can still come to us for the ATV. They can still come to us for new suits.
I'd rather leave some money in the capital reserve.
And take more of the budget.
And take more out of the budget if there's, if the budget supports it.
But we could just say that we approve the expenditure of purchasing it.
Right.
On Monday, we can say, this is where we're looking at to.
And what's the problem with turning it back in? What's the downside of that?
Of what?
Of putting it back into the. So then if you look at how much our amount comes up to and then what we'd be looking at. So like for the grader, you were talking about, we're planning ahead for three years to try to do it.
Would this pay down next year's tax rate?
It would go to the unassigned fund balance.
Right.
Which you could potentially use to buy down the tax rate, but it's a reval year, so technically your tax rate's going to reduce anyways.
Didn't we spend that down anyways? We should be trying to build that up a little bit more than.
What, the reserve fund balance, it's a twelve point.
No, it was eleven point eight, I thought the last time you sent it.
When we did the.
For last meeting, I thought we had the form, it was a.
It was on the, um, the tax rate setting document, it's a twelve point something.
It's lower than I thought we wanted.
So our target is twelve percent.
And I thought it was just below that, but.
Yeah, I thought it was a little below our target.
And we're not talking about spending like every dollar, but I'm thinking smart things for the town here, like.
No, grader is.
Right, it's a really smart thing.
A grader is a huge, smart investment for the town. There's probably eight hundred homes or more that you have to go to a dirt road in order to get to their house.
Twelve point two-one percent.
So the necessity of keeping those roads in a decent condition to access all these homes and all these residents, I mean, we're talking about a piece of equipment that's, that greatly affects the people of Nottingham.
And it should be a multi-year, but I mean, that's a.
Right. So, I mean, it's.
But people need to understand that the only reason we got the surplus because we didn't have enough police officers, we didn't have enough fire department, we didn't have enough. Right, our fire department was understaffed, PD was understaffed. Because you know that's going to be a huge issue.
Yeah.
Where'd this money come from?
We're just trying to be smart looking forward so that we're not asking.
Oh, I understand, I'm just saying we gotta be smart in how we present it to.
So food for thought for the rest of the night, you want to count through the twenty-five budget? What do you want to do? You don't have to spend it right now, but definitely seems like something smart to do. Somebody has a.
Hey, don't hit me.
We guys want to know.
Are you going, you can continue on your.
You go to the boys' room. You can wait.
No, wait for me, we can continue this subject going here. Do you want to go through the budget right now? We still got to talk about John's article or do we want to wait for Monday on that?
How much do we need to decrease this, uh, proposed budget?
As of right now, we don't have to.
So what good word is?
Unless.
I actually have a question. And I don't know what happened with the warrant article thing that happened the other day. So there was a petition to pave Stevens Hill Road for one twenty-five or something like that.
That's a citizen's petition.
Correct.
It's still a mon.
It was one of our roads to do in our two hundred and eighty thousand that we, we, we were allocating money to pave that and a citizen's petition.
But we weren't allocating for that. We're allocating for Deerfield Road and then.
Lucas Pond.
Lucas Pond. Stevens Hill wasn't in the equation.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was.
It was, we're paving jobs. Deerfield Road, Lucas Pond, yeah, Stevens Hill to the pavement.
It was just none of the aprons were going to be done, it was those three roads on the first page. Yeah, I, we just had the budget committee meeting on Thursday, I did the math for it. And I ended up, like, it was like four hundred dollars.
So, so the difference in the wording would be roads deemed priority by the, the highway director. So let's say hypothetically that both passed.
Yeah.
Then that would just enable him money to do.
Another road.
Another road.
Right.
In exchange for Deerfield.
Now, that's a citizen's petition, that didn't come from the budget committee.
Correct. But it still has monetary value, so it has to have a recommendation from both the select board and the budget committee.
But it's not a tax cap hit.
It, it still does, so it might potentially go on there without a recommendation.
If it gets passed, it's going to hit a tax cap.
It, it is.
But it can't go over the ten percent.
But it didn't come from the budget committee, yes.
No, but they still have to vote on it.
They still have to vote on it, still.
Has a tax impact.
The budget committee is still bound by that four percent recommendation. So it's the bottom line, including your petition warrant articles, which are considered special articles on the MS seven thirty-seven.
All right, did that receive enough to become a citizen's?
It has not been received by the office yet. The only one that has been received, other than the acceptance of Maple Ridge, is, um, a change to the tax cap for twenty-six and twenty-seven, a temporary change.
Okay.
But they have until, they have until the second Tuesday in January to get those.
I didn't, I wasn't trying to like change the budget base on that, but I was just kind of curious how that would impact us. If like, we're going to pave this road and then somebody's like, yeah, we want to pave this road. I'm like, we're both paving the road, we're not going to double pave it.
Right, no, we have.
It's all going to depend on the wording of the actual warrant article that you propose.
I know, they're having a discussion and I'll address Mr. Bates.
Oh, yeah.
It has nineteen signatures on it so far and they're taking it door to door on Stevens Hill. I think you're going to see it with the twenty-five.
Right, but did they know we were going to hit that?
Oh, they knew. They don't want to be combined with all of those others because that's, uh, they think that's why it failed last year.
Failed last year because it was five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was big.
Regardless.
Last year was a new year.
We just keep the wording like we've done in the past.
Right.
For our warrant article to give way to.
So potentially, even if it did come from as a petition warrant article, I'm just saying people are going to get confused because ours is going to say that we are, would we change our warrant article wording at that point or will it's?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because we don't want one that says we're going to pave Stevens Hill Road.
Yes.
And the next one down says you're going to pave Stevens Hill Road. And then technically, the budget committee has to say no on the citizens one to meet the four percent tax cap.
Personally, I'd pay part of Ledge Farm. I mean, that road is.
I, that's.
Most highly used dirt road we got in town.
There's a lot of work that needs to be done before it gets to the paving process. We paid a whole engineering design study to be done on that.
But Ledge Farm is also on our A-list.
Yes.
That's right.
I agree with that because it's on our A-list.
Let, and it's the only one that's ledge farm, both asphalt and gravel.
Right, it's the only A-lister that's includes gravel.
And that, and, and this as a maintenance goal, if you look at D for A, under gravel. Engineered drainage improvements made if possible, paving remaining gravel remains a priority. Particular if outside funding comes available.
So the way that we typically word the highway article is for highway reconstruction and maintenance on town roads to include but not limited to.
Right.
Um, or as prioritized by the highway director.
I mean, I think we would leave it with the wording to include Stevens Hill, even if the other one says Stevens Hill, but it gives us that flexibility that if they both pass, we can do something else because there's additional funding. There's no doubt we'll have some conversation at the library.
So what was the additional ARPA money that you were thinking for the just rainy day as of right now?
Nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
The grader. You could.
It's barely greater fuel.
Great, greater fund.
Did you have a plan for that or you just wanted to?
I don't, I mean, we had it technically reserved for, um, potential walkway at, we, we're figuring another sixty-two hundred dollars for the library, but that's no longer a need, so.
Okay.
Could be half a UTV for the police department.
Not for nine thousand.
Half of it.
Oh, half of it, yeah.
Or no, a little bit more than half.
Uh.
Bowling pads.
One thing that did come up at the budget committee meeting though, we haven't addressed, is the forty thousand dollar position for a maintenance person.
Correct.
Is can we create room in the budget? I know there's, we've got kind of five thousand dollars to play with right now.
We have five thousand dollars to play with right now. I have technically ten thousand dollars carrying forward to cover the first quarter of twenty-five because we encumbered the forty thousand that was by warrant article as well as the ten thousand dollars that was in the, um, salary, the town hall, other building operating budget to cover the position. Um, because it was so late in the year that we contracted it, so just the way the timing works out, we can potentially move forward in twenty-twenty-five with only having to raise thirty thousand of that.
So does that need to go on as a warrant?
It doesn't need to go on as a warrant, no.
It needs to get into the budget.
It needs to get into the budget, which.
It's in the default because it was approved.
Right.
But it wasn't a warrant or it wasn't an item that we just built in.
Right.
So it wasn't the default.
To meet the tax cap.
That's where it ended up.
So I kind of took a look at, uh, like lines one twenty through lines one thirty-eight for electric heat. It seemed like some of them were a little bit high. It doesn't reduce a lot, but looking at reducing some of those, particularly one twenty, one twenty-one, reduce those each by five hundred bucks. And then community central electric, reduce that by two thousand. I think it brings you closer to spend this year. And then one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, five oh, four fifty and three hundred respectively. And then recycling center heat, five hundred.
So what's your total savings there?
The total savings there is forty-two fifty.
Forty-two hundred and fifty dollars?
And then I looked at line out of two fifty-three for Highway Salt. Given what he has built up right now and what we haven't used.
We do have an invoice coming in for two loads.
But that's coming in for two thousand twenty-four.
Correct.
Is it? So you can still reduce that by ten thousand dollars maybe to fifty? Because we've only spent thirty-five so far. How much is it?
Fifteen thousand dollars. What do you got coming in for this year?
He just did two loads, so I think it's like...
About 3,000, right?
It's $80 a ton. Not even, it was $70 a ton, the contract. It's, it's going to be minimal.
So that is a total of like 14,000 plus the 5,000 that we had, so that's almost $20,000 right there. Plus the $10,000 that we have for the first quarter, so that's $30,000 right there.
And I have probably another, just to be on the safe side, I have about $3,000 in savings coming in in the phone and the internet across all the facilities for that new contract.
So you're saying you want the budget, 40,000 for the building maintenance position?
Right. Looking at all of the stuff that we have done, number one, and then I, I think there's a cost savings there. If you have somebody that's skilled, well, I know there is, um, that's skilled, that can do some of the smaller projects on their own versus us having to hire somebody anyway.
Do you think he did $40,000 worth?
What's that?
I'm going to call it out. So that's, do you think he was worth the, you saying that you think he's worth the 40 grand? I mean, I know what he did by subbing out, looking at, you know, who got to do the flooring, putting things together and stuff like this. You know, but...
But what did, what did we get our 40 grand value?
Is, did we get 40 grand, or is that a position we could hire somebody to do for 20 grand since most of the work was subbed out?
You're not going to pay somebody $20,000 for that position.
It's a part-time position just to basically, I mean, because I'd rather see, if we're going to talk about that, I'd rather see us go and put $10,000 more or $15,000 more in our recycling departments, money to get those guys more money. They're more valuable to me than the people in Nottingham, is making sure that place is staffed and running better. Pay those guys 20, 25 bucks an hour. Just throwing out my opinion.
I think having somebody in that position, given the punch list of items that we have.
Right, whether he's the person or not is, is another conversation.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, $20,000, though, I mean, I don't think you're going to get somebody to do that part-time. I mean, it's, who pays double that for, for somebody in that position?
But we're just paying for somebody to facilitate the work getting done, not actually working.
No, I think doing some of the work, that was the whole point of the...
Right, and that's part of the problem is like, what work did he actually do versus being subbed out?
Because he's hiring his crew.
Well, that's, that's, hiring his crew is subbing out.
I know.
So I guess that's the question is, what did we actually get?
I know for back there, he, when he subbed out his crew, we paid just...
$1,200 a day.
What?
It was like $1,200 per...
It was basically just their hourly rate.
And that was a whole different thing. That's not part of that 40K.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, that's part of the $50,000 warrant article.
Right. So for the 40K, what did we actually get?
You know, if you had to break it down and say, okay, for all the stuff you facilitated overseeing, was that worth 20? And then he gave us 20,000. You know, even if we use, the great guy, not against him, but I'm just saying though, going forward, if this is going to be a line item, you know, we talked about it down the years, down the road of having this in there, you know, I think our expectations were, well, I thought mine were, maybe that we'd get more...
More stuff.
Right, like...
Right, I mean...
More manual labor.
Right. Right, that was the understanding and how it was put, you know, sold to, you know, Nottingham was that some of this labor would happen out of that 40K.
Well, not according to the original wording of how it was worded, it was...
No, it was amended, it was amended so that it was...
Yeah, and I think it was our understanding as a board of selectmen that that, that would be what our...
It was, but it's not how it was worded.
Because, I mean, again, you could have the guy that does it, and again, he's going to sub out the work. I just don't know, I mean...
The expectation is that they should be able to do general handyman stuff within that $40,000. It's when it...
And I haven't seen, did we show you the full list of everything that he did?
No.
Okay, well, then that's, that's the problem.
Right, that's the problem.
Show me 40, show me $20,000 worth of work that you did for the town that wasn't charged to your company or to another company. That's what I want to see.
John, did he do some of the work on the old building?
What old, oh, back?
His first day.
Yeah, it's a separate warrant article, though. It's separate of the position.
But over at the highway center, not the highway, the recycling center.
The recycling center. We paid for that.
Right, so we paid for the...
Didn't come out of the 40,000.
The, so the ramp, whatever stuff there was subcontracted.
Correct.
The stairs for the historical building.
That was donated labor. That, that was separate of that, um, the historical society paid for the materials for the stairs, and he donated the labor.
Well, did he donate, or did we pay him in the 40 grand? That's my question.
I was told that he donated the labor.
Okay.
Well, see, if he's donating labor, and again, this is not against him, he's a great guy, I really like him, and this is not being personal, but if, if you're telling me you're donating your labor and you're taking a $40,000 thing for us to be our facilitator, why don't we give you 25,000 more and put it back on your shoulders? Oh, well, the reason why we're paying the 40 is to take it off our shoulders. I mean, and again, I'm sorry, I say that not without an ex, excuse doing it, but the reason why we, we brought this person in was to take the...
Right, take the burden.
Take the burden off her, but I don't know if the burden's worth 40 grand.
Right.
Train is derailed. Well, I, I get what you're saying.
You know, I get it, right?
I just don't, I don't think Alan has 20.
No, and again, that's not, that's not even on the subject. I'm just saying though, again, the reason why we're doing it is to take, so that she can focus on all this other stuff.
Well, every town has a government buildings budget and somebody that normally oversees it, especially for the size and the needs of our buildings.
So like, just a question, who do you call with that light bulb being out?
Right now, I get the call from whomever reports it. I text Alan, Alan then goes to the contractor, unless it's something that, I, I mean, honestly, I've replaced bulbs.
I was going to say, and then you get the step ladder out and replace the bulb.
So he's calling a contractor to replace a bulb?
Actually, no, I, I have to go back. That's a bad example because if the bulb is out, I fix it because I want it done now.
Which was part of the...
If somebody reports a light bulb on a different facility, not here at the community center, I don't expect you to drive...
And it goes to Alan and Alan handles it, whether it be...
Like the electrical issues at the shed.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess if we actually had a real employee to actually do that stuff as opposed to somebody who's facilitating it.
Well, and that was the thing, we, we advertised it both ways. We advertised it as an employee position, and we advertised it as a contracted position, and we went with a contracted position. We had them simultaneously advertised, and that was the route that we went.
But, yeah, a benefit.
I think that we get a discounted service rate, like if the company came to do work, you would get the employee cost and additional fee where it's like, I'm, you're just using employees that I have available to me, you're just paying their hourly rate today.
I don't know.
I think that's...
I, right, I, I don't...
I think that's how it was...
I try not to assume anything and think things like that.
No, I've, I'd asked that in the past. That was roughly how it'd been made knowledgeable to me from Alan, was that that's how he was handling that, but... Which is why sometimes it seemed delayed because the crew would be off doing, we had a really nice summer, you know, things. Yes, Steve?
Uh, John, you got an easy solution. If indeed you're going to be meeting next week, is that true?
Looks, yeah, we're going to meet on Monday.
Okay. You could have the police chief here and Alan or Ellen submit to Ellen what he's actually done so they can answer this question. I think he does it, does, he does facilitate things getting done. That I, I do know.
That's not the question. The question is, is it worth 40 grand?
Okay. Or he can show it?
That's, that's the question, is can that job be done less? Because again, it's new territory for us because it's the first year we ever did it. So we've got to have the discussion of whether it's worth it. I mean, yeah, there's been a lot of things that got done this year, but...
You could change the, uh, compensation schedule to be like a general contractor so he gets a percentage on top of whatever he's subbing out, and that's his pay.
Get all viable different...
I think that would be like if we do the change, if, if we continue with the money in the budget, which Tim has found a way to put the line item back in. How to proceed with any further contractual with anybody else?
I just think having somebody in that position is important.
I absolutely do. Can we pay 30 for him? Can we pay 25? Do we have to pay 40?
I think we, I mean, we, the town had been trying to hire somebody at the 15 to 20,000 dollar mark for years, and nobody, they've been, they've had, nobody get to step into that role.
Yeah, but the question is what we were asking for to what we were doing. Now, you know, again, if you're asking somebody to come in for $20,000 just to facilitate and set up quotes and get things done, more of just a, I mean, you don't need a contractor to do that. You can get anybody to do that job. By asking somebody to be a contractor and to fix windows and to do this, yeah, it's why you have a hard time doing it.
That's both, but we, we need both.
But again, no one can answer my question is whether what, what we got for the 40 grand.
Right.
I still haven't got that answer, and so I'm not going to support it till I know if I got 20,000, if we got $20,000 worth of, of services of building decks and repainting this and doing this, or did we just pay 40 for him to sit there and say, "Here's the three quotes for this job, here's the three quotes for this job, here's three quotes for this job, here's three quotes for this job." If that's what he did for 40 grand, I don't think that, I'm, I'm not in support of that. That's...
Well, you have a contract renewal coming up too.
Right.
Tomorrow. I warned you.
Should we just decide to give Alan $20,000 and take the position?
Right.
I think she said no.
Did you find 40,000 in all your math that you did? You said...
Well, between what Alan...
I, I think we can cover the first quarter of 2025.
From this year?
From this year.
And then, and then what I've found, it brings it closer to 30.
So then, right, because all we need is 30 to do that.
So it's just a matter of line item changes, not necessarily a bottom line change.
Okay. So we don't want to make it zero? Is it zero here or there?
It is a zero in there now.
Yeah, no.
So it's got to be...
Put a value in it.
30.
Put a place holder number in there, and then if our staffing and all the other departments continues to be what it is, it's going to be an issue to find them out.
And the other thing is we have the Sherman Seal Co. line at TBD still on the budget.
I think we decided to keep it as that warrant article, correct, the road reading.
Well, I mean, so one of the questions that came up at budget committee is of the proposed warrant articles that you've discussed so far, if we're not moving stuff into separate warrant articles to meet a tax cap on the operating budget alone, then what of those warrant articles can go back in the operating budget?
My fear...
Is...
Is that if we have an operating budget that is 6% higher than last year's operating budget, is that the voters...
Default will...
Yeah. People will not like that. So I was not in favor of moving a lot of the money from the, because I still think the warrant articles is still pretty thin anyway as far as what we're proposing, and I think moving $100,000 from the warrant article for the roads to the operating budget, again, I just think that increasing the operating budget above and beyond what we're doing right now could risk the voters saying no.
What does it show right now as a percentage?
What is a percentage right now?
Based off our proposed 2025 offer, what is that percentage up?
Four and a half percent.
Looks like four and a half. Would you want to just move like 85,000 over? Or are you saying nothing at all?
Well, we moved over, didn't we move the social services and stuff?
We put them back in, yeah, because we had originally pulled them out thinking it made a difference and realizing it didn't. We just... Just put them as a...
And the boat inspections.
And the, the others, yeah, the other stuff up above it for warrant articles, right, police tech, and those are specific, um, capital reserve funds, so they have to have a...
Right, they have to be...
Correct. Everything else is either an addition to a capital reserve or expendable trust, so it has to be.
Right now, it's a 4.3% increase.
Are you talking about on the operating budget?
Yeah, just the dollar amount. The dollar amount is 4.3% increase over the default budget from last year.
But that includes...
Just how it looks. If somebody just looks at it, overall, we're going to meet the tax cap, including the warrant articles.
Right, because the warrant articles.
Because we move stuff back.
I came up with 3.95.
But it makes it less confusing overall.
Are you going to muffle which one? Default or approved 2024?
I'm looking at the 2024, which is the default of $4,848,608.
I was using the wrong. I was using the wrong proposed budget. You're correct. I was using that one from 11/18.
Oh, so that's the only thing that makes me nervous is that if you're going up five, six percent, five and a half percent over the prior year, the budget.
So we're not at 4%.
What's that?
We're not at 4.
Well, 4% for the tax cap.
Okay.
The dollar amount that we're increasing over the default is 4.3%, which I think is reasonable.
The 10,000 you were talking about, that's just something that's going to be carrying over, that's not really going to be on this budget sheet? Do we need to encumber it?
It would technically go toward the final payment.
What, 10,000?
We, we encumbered from the 2023 budget, we encumbered $10,000 from the salary line and the $40,000 warrant article. So we technically had $50,000 to fund that position.
Oh, oh, yep.
And the contract was 40,000 for the year, so technically we could take that 10,000 to fund the first quarter of 2025.
But then we decreased the building maintenance reserve to 18, so if we got that kind of money, how much money we got there to spend?
That building maintenance, that's just for that...
It's on the building ma, but there, there was still a, I don't have that sheet in here from last week.
Which one?
The remaining totals of what's in the building. That one had quite a bit of money.
Okay.
Yeah, it still had, um, 90,000 in it.
Okay. So we still got money to work with. No, safety, we refunded it, uh, completed the crap out of it, then.
Town building maintenance expendable trust fund had $91,834 in it.
Okay. We got some money we can work with, do some improvements. Maintain our buildings.
So if we took $25,000 from the warrant article for the roads and added it to Sherman Seal Co., which is about what it was in 2023, that'd be a 4.8% increase in the budget.
And just reduce the warrant to 260, uh, yeah, 260.
260.
Then that means those three, that impacts those three roads. Unless we just, unless we just use it for that, you put it in the Sherman Seal Co., we're using it for the roads.
Right, the number we came up with to pay for those...
And those three roads, correct.
So, yeah, so we didn't really have any money for Sherman Seal Co.
No.
We haven't Schimmed in Seal Co for quite some time. So let's just leave it out.
Okay. We're gonna change it from TBD to zero.
Right.
Or at least make it one.
Whatever, a dollar, sure. Doesn't really matter.
A dollar, you're okay with a dollar, John?
No, not really.
At least something, I mean, there are some roads that if, whatever.
We're allowed to, we're allowed to change things per line item anyways.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Doesn't matter.
I'm just saying with these.
We should be seal coating. Right, right, but if we spend money there, that's fine, if we have money to spend there, we could do it, then we do it, doesn't matter if there's a dollar there, or if there's a zero there. No, I know.
I thought it didn't matter if there was a zero.
No, it's only in the overall.
That's the overall, they have something based on it.
Okay.
Right, as long as.
So like zero for airports.
Right.
We can't build an airport.
We can't build an airport, if there was a dollar in the airport one, then we could put whatever.
Those, those drones need someplace to land.
We used to have an airport, we don't have an airport anymore.
Right, as a horse. Mr. Moore, what are you thinking?
Ten o'clock!
He's thinking he wants to go home and go to bed.
I'm gonna go to another meeting on Monday.
Do we gotta talk about this quickly, John, do you wanna talk about that?
Um, I table that to Monday.
You tabled it to Monday?
Well, if these guys aren't gonna be here.
Well, only Tim's not, but sure, go for it, you want to talk to, I mean.
I'll, I'll take a second.
Go for it.
Basically, um, there's an article to. Uh, to take a loan for a hundred thousand dollars to hire a certified lake management engineering firm to do a study based, it's similar to. Um, what we were looking for from that other grant, but this is the wording I was really concerned with, is to make sure that, uh, that. That if there's money left over from the plan, that we could actually start implementation. Um, so that, that purpose line. The idea here is it's a loan similar to what we did for the Culvert Study a couple of years back, where it is, um, forgiven, the principal's forgiven. The PLIA would pick up the interest, and the interest due, so it would cost the town nothing, assuming the work got done.
Is this been reviewed by legal?
None.
No, this is like, I drafted this based on some samples I had, and our previous Warren Article. I was mostly concerned with that purpose, I guess we would need to get it, uh, reviewed by legal. Sorry, Steve? To hire a certified lake management engineering firm to study conditions, provide design solutions, to reduce external, internal phosphorus loading, and. Implementation, implement any remediation product, projects to protect our lake.
So my question is, who is this firm? Is there, is there a list of firms to choose from?
Yeah, there are a list of firms to choose from.
Who are they?
Uh, I don't have it off the top of my head, but there was one that we got, there was one we got a quote for from the last grant.
But wasn't the last, was, how big was the last grant we were going for?
I, I think we were looking for sixty-eight. Sixty-eight thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Was our quote.
Yeah, on the six oh four B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will this be the town pays out the hundred grand and then gets the money reimbursed back in, or?
Correct, just like we did for the Culvert, the asset management. Uh, the.
New Hampshire, um.
How do we know they're gonna give us the money?
New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
How do we know we're gonna get the money from?
Just because they're gonna give it to us?
You don't, well, we don't, we don't know if we'll get the grant, if we don't get the grant, we don't spend it, you know, so it's like. Or the loan, if we don't get the loan, we don't spend it, basically.
So I. You'd have to put that in there someplace, right?
Right, so, well, that's what I'm rea, that's why I'm, I'm trying to understand where, how you.
That's fine, it wasn't in the previous one, so. I kind of. This previous wording. If we have words that we need to add or change or whatever, that.
The real question is, is would you be in support of putting this article together as a board?
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome. We can clean up the, the wording.
Uh, sure, free is good.
I mean, we supported the, seeking the, the grant funding for the same purpose, so I, um, I would support it.
Yeah, she would get the words cleaned up before January second, or at least have it passed through legal, if they say that it's good.
Right.
Oh, maybe it's too late for me.
It's too late for you, that's fine.
Joe would definitely be onto the.
I mean, not that I'm opposed, you know, obviously, whatever makes the lake better, I'm for, you know, I'm not gonna be against that in any way, but.
Free, and free is good.
Free price.
Free price. And if it's free. If we have to spend a hundred thousand dollars out of our coffers, then. No, it's.
It gets reimbursed.
It's reimbursed.
Right. Just wanted to guarantee it of being reimbursed.
The way that some of the towns worded it, is that the money would come from unreserved fund balance, and then the assumption is, is that it comes back in.
Right, I don't know how it actually works, but it's a loan. Principal forgiven loan.
See, the wording you're using, a loan means that it's actually our money that's going out, it's not getting paid, I mean, a loan is, we're paying a loan back.
Right, but it's a hundred percent, hundred percent principal forgiveness loan, what it technically is.
When you say that too, hundred percent principal forgiveness, okay, that mean.
Right, and then the interest, PLA will pick up the interest.
Um. I'm gonna just support it. I, I would think the last thing to have, see if Alan, you can put together for Monday, for potential to spend, if any overage, would we wanna try to put the, um. Master plan, just one time fund it, since half the, the housing is on there.
Can we, if we fund it, can we actually get it done?
Right. I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
That's, that's because, because we've funded it, we've funded it in the past, and haven't made any progress on it.
Right, okay, or the other thing would be the last bit of, uh. Revaluation next year.
Guys, alright, so.
We gotta do that.
I'm gonna say we adjourn this meeting right now and go into non-public, finish that up quickly, so we can at least be out of here by ten thirty.
We do.
Alright.
Everyone, make a motion.
Just a second. Make a motion to move to non-public due to our.
A, B, C.
S, how do I go?
Say ninety-one, A, three.
Ninety-one, A, three, two.
A, B, C.
B, C.
A, B, C.
I'll second.
Got a motion, second roll call vote?
Hi, Steve Walsh. Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tim DaBrio.
Hi.
Once we leave on public, we will close and end the meeting, and adjourn for the evening.